Alright, mic check. Mic, check. Check, check. Mic, check. Just making sure, sounds good guys. How's everybody doing tonight, man?
Oh.
Hmm, sounds good. Alright. Alrighty. Alright, let's get into this guys, so, um. If you've ever tuned in before, um, we've covered topics, um, we've definitely covered CCNA, uh, the, uh, two hundred, uh, dash three hundred, um, IT, so take a fit, um. We've covered it in depth a lot, but it's been a long time since then, um. And, yeah, I stood around lighting out tonight, so if you guys can hear the thunder and the lightning, um. That's because, so, um. So, um, so yeah, it's been a while since I've covered anything CCNA, um, related. Um, what's changes is, you know, since I've covered that topic, um, I've never really gotten a job in technology at all, um, and just recently that I, I've gotten an interview and, uh, you know, possibly things have changed, so. What my plan is, is, uh, I guess one of my things is, you know, not so much going after stick fits, you know. It would be nice to encourage somebody to go after the, their own stick fit and stuff like that, um. But I need to, I guess, just really refresh on all of it, all over again, everything. Um, from soup to nuts, um, so we're gonna go that step by step, we'll skip around some. And that's why, you know, I'm not gonna stick to the transition, you know, the, uh, traditional, um. You know, maybe, uh, way of going down the study line and stuff like that, it's gonna be like kinda fast paced, cause I gotta learn things quick. Again, uh, but we'll dive into also, this will break off to some other things too, um. Cause we get to dive back into, to coding projects and stuff like that, to kinda rehash on some things, um, some other general coding projects, you know. Man, what was I gonna say, what was I gonna say? Um. Yeah, I guess, yeah, we're just gonna be doing a lot more front and back end, developing stuff, um. Focus a lot on deployment, and then the main, the main, main focus, uh, that we need to really, uh, spend some time on is, uh, learning Microsoft Azure, uh, especially when it comes to, um, deployment and VPN creation. Uh, kinda unlike the, like the DevOps way of, uh, keeping that in the cycle. Just to keep things, you know, as they update, deploy, you know, everything's just keep going, 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 going. So that's kinda the focus, um. I, I got some, uh, I do got links in the YouTube description, um, if anybody on Twitch need, you know, would like any of the links, just hit. You know, say something in the chat or something like that, and I'll get you whatever. Links I can, um, yeah, again, for those on YouTube, the links, um, the links to David's stuff. Cause a lot of, you know, at least on this, at least this stream, we've come out of streams, we're gonna, you know, focus on some of David's, um, David Bumbles. Stuff, um, he's got a lot of stuff on YouTube, I mean, he's got a lot of stuff on Udemy, and I, I plugged this close, and you, I plugged his course on Udemy. Um, I was also plugged his YouTube page, make sure you guys check him out, like, um, like share and subscribe to his page, um. And then on his Udemy class, um, again, I'm not, it's not a paid plug, it's just, I'm just, you know. Try to just throw that out there for him, uh, because we're gonna be touching on some of the stuff that's in his Udemies. His Udemy class that, uh, you know, I've purchased before, a long, 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 long time ago, when I was first doing the CCNA stuff. And, uh, we're just gonna be covering, touching on some of that, cause that's one of his, you know, I, I really. It's really structured that way, instead of just going through YouTube, uh, video by your video, but again, his free stuff's all over YouTube, he's got a free course. On YouTube, um, covering all, everything, you know, even outside of CCNA, you know, greater and greater topics, uh, the man covers everything. Um, so make sure you guys just give him a shout out. And go over his stuff, check him out, um, other than that. Yeah, so if you guys have any questions as we go along, um. You know, make sure you bring them up, again, this is just a real refresher, um, on a lot of stuff. And we're just gonna go from there, alright. So, um, kinda get into things. I guess we'll, kinda stuff here, well, again, we're starting at the very fundamentals, and we're gonna work our way back up, so.
Now, we can't talk about computer networking without discussing what a network actually is, and I'm not talking about a social media network or a network with friends, I'm talking about a computer network. Now, AI seems to be one of those topics that people either love or hate, but let's see if a computer can tell us what a computer network actually is.
Um, I do got Cisco Packet Tracer up and running, um. You know, again, if you've ever watched any of my streams before on the fast, um, I got virtualization, um, you know. GNS three, CML, you know, I've already dived heavily, you know, feet first, head, toes into all that stuff, um. I probably, if I, if I need to do labs, um, either one, um. I have access to it, but I don't think we'll be there just yet, when I'll need to, uh, deploy one of my, uh, GNS theories or CML servers or anything like that. For the most part, a lot of the stuff can be covered right through Cisco Packet Tracer, and it is free, just gotta sign up through Cisco, um, and it's a great program, um. If you guys, that's why I've been having this up right here, if guys have any issues seeing any of the, um. Command line interfaces or any of that, or, um, I know I should probably start a fake paste bin for stuff, but if we get to any. If we create any labs, if we, if we do anything like that, where, you know, we'll, we'll, we get into the weeds and stuff like that. Um, I'll create maybe a Git page for some of these labs, that way I can paste whatever commands, you know, and link the, the labs, so you guys can download them if you want. And, um, yeah, just, uh, just give me a shout out if you want any of that stuff, you know. Like I said, if, you know, if anything, we can always create a, a Git repo for some of this lab stuff, I've done that before. You know, cause sometimes people like, um, just like going over the, uh, command line and stuff like that, see what kinda commands I've, I've, I've invented. Alright, so yeah, um, that covers that.
Alexa, what is a computer network?
A computer network is a set of computers sharing resources located on or provided by network nodes. Computers use common communication protocols over digital interconnections to communicate with each other.
Now, that's actually just taken from Wikipedia, and I have a bit more here, we're told that these interconnections are made up of telecommunications network technologies based on physically wired, optical and wireless radio frequency methods that may be arranged in a variety of network topologies. Now, that just sounds like a bunch of work.
Um, so simply stating, obviously, a network is just a, um. A simple. Line, not line, but I mean, that's when we get into topologies, it's, it's a sick, it's, it's connections to another computer. Uh, and if you could think almost everything these days as a computer, I mean, even cars and everything else, I, you know, the Internet of Things devices. Everything lives on a network now, this is, you know, we can get into this, we're gonna get to cloud, private, public, um. International, you know, there's a many, there's a many networks that exist, um. And in the beginning, which some of the stuff, you know, we'll, we'll, again, we're gonna touch on some of the stuff, maybe not go too, too deep into the weeds, to the, uh, to everything, but again, a network in, in the beginning, you know, the network, um. Started simple, got very complicated, and then it needed to be, uh, there needed to be rules added to it, um. And those who abide by the rules get to stay on what we know as today is the big internet. Again, but there are many layers to that actual onion that is, um. Networks, cause there are multiple networks, and there could be multiple internets, that's where you get the deep web. Uh, that's where you get, you know, China, China's internet, Germany's internet, America's internet, you know, um. If you guys ever heard of, you know, um, you know, when you see those YouTube ads, and they're trying to make you, you know, sign up for a VPN, so you can get, you know, different show on Netflix, because what's happening is, is you exist, uh, because your geological location, you exist on certain networks. Um, you can mask that geological location, um, through VPNs, um. Pretty much what it's doing is, is taking your traffic and serving it through other routes. Living on a server, on a data center, somewhere else in the greater, um, geological world, whatever.
But if you're not used to the terms used in networking, you're gonna struggle, so it's really important that we define some of the terms in networking. I will warn you that a lot of people that start in networking really struggle, because we've got all of these terms, and it's hard to understand all the different terms, but just bear.
And he is right about that, that's something that, you know. Especially, I guess, when you're going for these certifications, it's the freaking terminology, there's so many terms. Um, if you've ever been in the military, um, you'll be very familiar with how they use acronyms and everything else, for legitimately everything. But again, this, this goes back to, uh, when network, you know, when networking was the wild, wild west, and, uh. Rules had to be made, and, uh, obviously, it's a complicated thing, so there's a lot of terms out there to describe things, and how, you know, the inter. The ensure gears to make things work, yeah.
Stay with me and go through the course, you'll find that as we repeat definitions and as I show you different examples, it'll make a lot more sense. But let's start with what is a computer network explained by a human. Now, basically, we're looking at computers that are sharing the resources. Now, what is a resource? A resource could be a file, it could be a video, it could be a picture. We basically wanna share something with each other, you watching this video through a computer network. Computer network is made up of different nodes or end devices, so we talk about nodes here or hosts. So node could be a computer, could be a laptop like this, it could be an Alexa like this, it could be a server like this. It could be a phone or any other device that you have connected to a network, could be routers and switches and other network devices. A host is an end device, so think of a host kinda like a PC or a phone or a server. Where one device called a client is accessing a resource or something that's shared by a server. Now, the reason I read the.
So if you got that terminology, um. Alright, so just like he was saying, um, with nodes. Uh, nodes and hosts, nodes and hosts, so, um, a node, something that would serve something. Or a host is something that would ask for something that would make a request, so, um. This could be, you know, represent a server, obviously, anything could be representing of a server, or a PC can represent a server or whatnot. But again, in PT, uh, Packet Tracer here, uh, there are some great. They just have some great representations of things, and they've added some little things here and there, so, you know, here's your ho- node, here's your host, you know, obviously, the host is requesting something, and then the server's gonna serve it.
Next part of the definition is we are sharing resources connected via different means, could be a fiber optic cable like this. So notice light shining through this cable, we could be connected using copy ethernet cables like these. Or we could be connected to a wifi access point like this one. Now, a lot of us in our home networks may have a home router such as this, notice wifi, that's one way to share resources. We can connect from one device to another using wifi. Or you could connect to the internet using satellite technology by using a Starlink such as this one. Networks can get really complicated, the biggest network that we know, unless aliens have bigger networks out there somewhere, is the internet. But networks don't have to be that big, a network can simply consist of two devices or two nodes, or if you like, two hosts.
Yeah, so, I mean, again, to, to go back to Hussein, again, to make things simple, you can create a simple network right here, by these, connecting these two. These two machines together could, you know, be a network, that could be it. You can create your own private addressing within those two computers and just talk to those two computers. You wouldn't need to talk to the greater, bigger, global internet, you know, you don't need to be connected to that, to be considered a, a network. Obviously, you, when you ask, you know, request a, uh, internet services from your, um, cable or internet provider, your ISP. They're gonna provide you with an, uh, IP address and a router and a line that's going to connect you to the greater internet, okay? And the great big internet is a network of billions and billions and billions of machines, you know. All interconnected in a web of madness.
Now, in networking today, we have what is called the client-server model, we have what are called servers. Here's an example of a server, it's providing a service or sharing a resource with a client, a client could be a phone as an example, or could be a laptop. Servers come in different shapes and sizes, notice if I open here, we can see the server has a hard drive in.
Um, I, I don't know, I mean, if you guys go back to my old, 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 old stuff, um, I don't have it anymore, kinda lost some things, um. My last move, I lost my servers and everything, but I did have servers, um, I had two, um, HP, uh, what kinda servers were they? I, I made, I made a video on them, uh, when I bought them, this was going back a couple of four, four years ago, so, um. And I had, um, what was I writing? I was writing EXXI on both of them, and, you know, I was creating, I was trying to create, you know, the big VMware Center and all that stuff between them to kinda, you know, balance, load balance between them and all that happy jazz. Sucks I don't have them anymore, they were nice, uh, well. One was nicer than the other one, but, um, yeah, so, that's like that I ain't got them out no more, but. So, we've experienced a server and we've, you know, a server itself, you know, again. A laptop can be a server, you can serve anything, server, you know, webpage on a potato these days, I'm pretty sure somebody's figured out how to do it. And, um, yeah, so a server can be anything, don't ever think a server has to be this big massive machine, but ten thousand freaking hard drives. It can be a potato, literally, a potato.
Consists of a whole bunch of hard drives, servers that are used in data centers such as in Amazon or in YouTube tend to be very large. They have a lot of CPU power, they have a lot of RAM, they have a lot of hard disk space, because they are serving many, many clients. Many client devices are accessing the service provided.
Guys, just make sure you do me a favor real quick, make sure you guys like, share and subscribe, um. And if you appreciate my work, you know, I've never really done this, but if you really do appreciate my work and appreciate what I do, um, because I've never gotten anything from it. Make sure you guys do support me down at the, you know, the Buy Me Coffee or, or scan the QR code right here and help a brother out. Brother's going through some tough shit right now, I need some help.
By the server, in other words, they want the resource, which could be a YouTube video, it could be a file, it could be something else that's shared. But a server doesn't have to look this way, your laptop could act as a client when it's trying to get a resource. Or it could act like a server when it's providing a resource to a client. So as an example, on this laptop, I'm running the Plex server. So if I search for Plex here, notice it says Plex Media Server. That provides a service or a resource to a client, in this example, it's providing videos. So if I open up Plex, you can see various videos are hosted.
I, I can kinda give you an example of that, hold on, me, um. Okay, so I'll give you a quick example of what a server is. Well, this is, you'll see in a second, yeah, I'm sure. Alright, perfect, so, um. Alright, so what you're looking at right there, uh, this is Potainer, now I use Potainer, um, like Carbonetti's. Uh, if you're familiar with Carbonetti's at all, to manage my Docker environments that are living, uh, on my Raspberry Pi, so right now I got a couple of containers running. Um, as you can see here, these are my containers that I'm running right here, so, uh, this is actually what I'm using right here to help me do multi-streaming, it's a, uh, a container called Restreamer, this is Potainer, this is the actual, uh. This is the server that's managing my Docker containers inside of my Raspberry Pi, so this is running, this is all containerized too. Uh, this is the little dashboard, and then this is some Rustic stuff right over here, so, uh, when it comes to. You know, knowing what a server is, you again, you can run us, run a server off a potato, I'm running, um, a server that does some pretty neat, you know, um, a containerized server environment that's running off of a Raspberry Pi that, you know, assists me in doing my daily work here and stuff like that, so. Alright, so, well, that's that, um, just to give you an idea what a server is.
On this laptop, which is now acting as a server, it has a resource that can be accessed by a client. So on my phone as an example, if I connect to the IP address of the server, I can see that a webpage is displayed. And I can press play and a video plays, that video is playing from that server, the phone is acting as a client. The PC is acting as a server, the resource is streamed, in this case, from the laptop to the phone, it's through wifi. So it's going through the air, I don't have a physical cable connecting the phone to the laptop, transmission is through wifi. But notice, if I close that service down, so what I'll do is exit the Plex service. Notice the site is no longer available, and on the phone, it says the site can't be reached. Now, I'm connecting from the phone to the laptop using an IP address. IP address is a logical address for a host on a network. In networks today, we use either TCP IP version four or TCP IP version six, we'll focus on TCP IP version four.
And even to this day, um, we're still using IPv4, even to this day, we're still using IPv4. You know, there's really, there's really no need, still, in my opinion, you know, I mean, again, there's really no need to, to, um. Try to even. I don't, I don't, I just don't think there's a use to really creating a IPv6, you know, um, private network, I mean, that's just. You're overdoing it, I know, I do understand though, an IPv6, um, I think package delivery is a little bit different, um, I think there's some package delivery stuff that goes along with IPv6 that, um. You know, possibly can do some different stuff, you know, the, the delivery methods and stuff like that, so, it's probably a use case for it. It's a use case for everything, at least for the most part, um, but for the most part, IPv4 is still, um, still the most prominent, um. Protocol that we still use to this day.
Or host, a device such as a laptop and a phone gets allocated an IP address either manually or through a protocol known as DHCP or dynamic host.
Would you say, uh, Karas, did it find out useful when I wanted AWS to talk to GCP? Since you don't need to pay for net services, which is expensive, talk to, oh, Google Cloud, okay. Yeah, um, that's interesting, huh? Um, I was just, again, I'm trying to get into Azure, um, just, I just opened up, I was going, I was doing some of the fundamental courses and stuff like that. Again, this is some stuff I'm gonna bring to the stream too as well, uh, but what is it called, Azure, um, is it Azure Arc? Now, um, that will help you, um, control, um, environmental, you know, environments in AWS, in GCP. Uh, even in some of the private stuff and stuff like that, um, also, Professor's charge you. These, um, private, I'm pretty sure that's private, right? That's because probably the, probably because of the, um, obviously the, uh, public, public IPv. IPv4, uh, addressing pool is pretty much at this point, probably non-existent. And to get an actual, you know, static IPv, IPv4 address, still pretty expensive, so, um, I mean, you could still get one, you could still get one from your, um. From your internet provider, obviously, it does, uh, does cost still. Public ones are charged for private networks, yeah, nobody cares about, obviously, private networks, yeah, so yeah, I, I, my bad, I'll say private in the beginning, yeah, I meant public, yeah. Yeah, yeah, makes sense, makes sense, and that's what I was getting into about IPv6 is, why would you? I guess I just don't under, I don't know the, the, the reasoning or the case study why you would need a, um, a private IPv6, uh, network, uh. Just obviously, my head, it would just make my head hurt.
Declaration protocol, so DHCP, when a device connects to the wifi network, as an example, your home wifi router gets allocated an IP address by the router, so this device has an IP address of one nine two one six eight zero one twenty one. That IP address was allocated through DHCP, this device will use a different IP address. So as an example, on the phone, if I go to Settings, Connections, Wifi, I can see that the IP address was allocated through DHCP. And the IP address that's allocated is one nine two one six eight zero two oh six. For these two devices to communicate, they need to have IP connectivity between them. Now, generally, when you connect to the internet, you don't use an IP address, you use a name, an easy to remember name, such as google.com or youtube.com, that name is.
And that's, you know, obviously, something we're all very familiar with, um, with DNS and stuff like that, um, you know, we don't put, um. Um, you know, we don't put, um, companies, um, public, I, you know, IP addresses into our browser. Um, to find their, uh, their webpages and stuff like that. We use DNS and, uh. He's gonna, he's probably gonna get into DNS and stuff like that, um. And, and pretty much what it does, what its tables.
Actually translated into an IP address using a protocol or language called DNS or Domain Name System. It converts the name to an IP address because devices on a network don't use names.
I mean, and again, if you're familiar with tags and stuff like that, um, it's, it's similar to like that, that same kind of. Logic with tags and, and, you know, just, uh, breaking things down, um. So, things can be found.
IP addresses and MAC addresses which are hardware addresses burnt into a network interface card on a device. Now for a service to be available, we need to run some software. On a device. So on this laptop, we're running the Plex server. It's basically a piece of software that's offering.
I'm not calling it a language.
To clients. Clients connect to the server using an IP address and a.
I mean, you can make it complicated.
So in this example, the port number used is three two four hundred. Think of a port number. As allowing a device to listen to different connections for different services on different numbers. So as an example, HTTP which is used on the internet, generally today we use HTTPS. Those protocols are used by your web browser to connect to a web server. So as an example, google.com. Those servers use a well-known port number of eighty for HTTP and four four three for HTTPS.
Yeah, so port numbers, um, like I just had up there, let me bring up, um. Kind of see. Alright, so, uh. So he was just talking about port numbers and again. When it comes to IP addressing, um, you can also break, pretty much servers can be. Cause you're gonna have multiple servers running on a single server. You're gonna have, you know, obviously multiple container environments running on a single server. Now you can reach those individual servers through ports. Uh, and that's on the server end to decide the port number, whatever port number is going to be. Um, there are some port number ranges that are, um. Use, there are some port number ranges that are accessible. Um, obviously, when you start doing stuff with servers. You just gotta keep in mind, you're not stepping on your, your, your toes by. By trying to use the same port number over and it happens, it always happens with me, especially when I'm doing stuff. And, you know, with Docker and stuff like that, cause I'll have a couple of different environments running and. Before I know it, you know, I'll have, you know, I'll have a couple of different things that I'm trying to use on port eighty eighty or port eighty. And I'm already using it and stuff like that. Uh, but it's again, it's, this ports. Are when, when, when the, once, you know, obviously, the server itself, it's NIC. It's network interface, uh, card. That single NIC, and then we can get the virtual NICs, which breaks it down again, even again. Uh, but the NIC itself has its own address and that's the IP address. The NIC itself, that packet can get there from there. Ports then, you break off, you know, servers and how to reach each service, stuff like that. What'd you say? There is, uh, there is usually a file on computer called services. Oh, with a port, that you can have that, um. But when you, uh, when you're dealing with, you know, containerized environments and stuff like that, if you don't, if you don't. Take your time to create, um, hold on. My camera's out of focus. Um, yeah, I mean, you don't need something like that. You don't need an actual document. Uh, you should probably create one. Uh, but yeah, so I need port assignments. Yeah, so you're, I could pull that up too. So out of focus right now. See my big forehead focused on that? Shiny forehead always focuses, isn't it? Um, so you're talking about. So here we go, from the Internet Assign, uh, Numbers Authority, which is again the, um, one of the governing, um. One of the governance over, uh, the network that we, uh, the internet that we call today as we use it. Um, you also have the IEEE and stuff like that, um. I have the people who assign which services, which ports. Yeah, yeah, no, and I, and hey, I really appreciate you, um, stuff like that. It's, it's a great point. Uh, so what, um. Person's saying is the IANA, uh, are the people who assign which services has which port. Um, so that everyone can agree on the same, on the same numbers, uh. No, uh, no need to invent your own. That's true, but if you're, if you're, you're. If you're creating your own container environments, this is what I'm trying to get at. You can create whatever you want, um. Again, let me go back to, these are my multiple containers that I'm running. Now I can run multiple different. Potainer environments on the same server. There is a range in which is totally available. That's what I was trying to get at. There is a totally free of range. These, you could have conflicting ports when you're running multiple different services on a single server. You're gonna have conflicting ports, um, and you'll have to re-map and port, you know, re-map them to whatever ports available. Yeah, exactly. Well, it's not, yeah. Well, I don't think you're gonna, you know, if you could. If you got more than sixty five thousand services running on a single server, I mean, which is completely feasible. And you are right, you are technically right. Um, it is not do whatever you want. It is for the most part, you have a pretty wide range to mess with. And nothing is, nothing has to be, like I can make this port, you know. Within that range that I have, um, and then obviously use DNS to then be able for. You know, my, the client side to reach it easily. Obviously, the client side doesn't need to know the port. Realistically, the DNS. The DNS, um, for the most part, has to have this information. Then the DNS, you know. And yes, these things are true. It starts gobbling up. You know, starts gobbling up all that, that room, uh, and this is why, you know. Technology, you know, network interface card technology, NIC card technology is continuing to, um, get faster and faster. Doesn't usually say on the server reports. A DNS server creates, they're the same ports, yeah. Uh, what's DNS? What is it? What port is DNS? Um. Forget it. It's like forty three or something like that. Go. Fifty three. Thank you very much. Yeah. Yeah, so rightfully so. You would want, if you created DNS server, to be on port fifty three. That way, every other machine knows to speak to. You know, whatever IP address on port fifty three to reach, uh. But when you, but the actual server running on the port, the DNS server, when you talk to it. And ask it, what is the port for HTTP? It tells you, doesn't know. Um, but if the actual server running on that port, the DNS server. If there is a HTTP server. Running on it and you have the DNS record in the DNS server, even if that. HD, HTTP, um. HTTP, you know, whatever, um, on port eighty or eighty eighty. Uh, as long as you have that record in DNS, even if it's on that same port, it'll still direct you to the same, the same place. Um, I have multiple, again, I'm, I'm running multiple. This is running on the Raspberry Pi. No, it does. But it, 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 it does port mapping. I mean. I'm pretty sure that you can add the port mapping, um, to DNS records. I've done it, um, done it multiple times. Obviously, I don't have, I have a DNS running on my router here. I'll create one. And one, and one of these labs will create one. You know, I, I really appreciate you, you, you hanging out and talking with me. Um, but yeah, we'll, we'll definitely create a, uh. We'll definitely create a DNS, um. A DNS server. And we'll, we'll see, actually, hey, let me take a look at this real quick. So I believe this. And in this address, we could, cause I could serve, that's what I'll do. And I'll show you that you could add. You can map ports to, um, your DNS records. We'll get into it. We'll get into it. It's not too far ahead. Again, I really appreciate you, um. And I, I, I. Frequency used by common services. I one hundred, ten percent agree with you. You know, one hundred and ten percent, um. Let's, we'll just take a step back and we'll, you know. We'll just carry on, we're carrying on.
Yeah, the Plex server is using a different port number. So when I connect from the client to the server, I have to make sure that I'm connecting to that port number three two four hundred.
Oh, wait, hold on. I don't want that to come up like that. Uh, Dirtbag, Dirtbag Dom, hi. Just so happened to be studying land switch. Oh, really? Dirtbag Doom, um, studying them switches. Yeah, we're gonna be getting to that very, very shortly, um. Again, if you have any questions on anything or if you wanna bring up anything. Again, Kershon, thank you very much. I really appreciate you too. So let's just continue on, guys.
To the IP address and the specific port number.
Guys, make sure you guys, you know, like, share and subscribe.
And I just went to the IP address of that server.
Um, and if you really appreciate what I do, guys, make sure you guys, you know, uh, go into the links and support me.
Is listening on that port number. There isn't a process.
Trying to get things back together now.
That's listening to requests on that port number. This is port number eighty. You have to connect to the right port number. Which is three two four hundred in this example. So to summarize, this laptop is acting as a server in this example because it's providing a service. To a client. In this case, the phone is the client initiating a connection to the server, asking for something. In this case, it's asking for a video. So as an example, I can press play once again and the video plays on my phone. This laptop acts as a server running the Plex servers, but can act as a client. So if I go to google.com. Notice it's acting as a client here. In this case, it's initiating a session to Google, asking for some information. In this case, the port number used is four four three. That's just a default port you used for HTTPS, which is the protocol used for secure web communication. Now, before we had networks, how did people share data, videos, software, photos with each other? They would have to use something like this. So here's an example of a game using CD ROMs. So if you're as old as I am, you would remember getting games like this and having to install them using CDs. Here's an example with Windows ninety five.
You know, it's funny, I hear, um, CD players like Walkmans and stuff like that that we had, you know, back in the nineties and in the eighties. Um, they're actually coming back, kids, you know, obviously I don't see my kids, I haven't seen my kids in a long time, but. Uh, kids are asking their, for their parents for frigging, um, CD ROMs and Walkmans again. It's freaking out. It's crazy. But, you know, it goes to the point where it's like. I think it sounded maybe a little bit, it sounded better, you know, on the, on those actual physical devices, cause it was the physical data. Being read right there on the spot. And the other fact is, um, no commercials. You're not streaming it, you don't have to pay, you know, they'll pay for a fucking service every freaking month. You own the fucking disc, you own the disc, you know?
Five. So you'd have to install Windows with a CD ROM like this. And if you're even older than that, like me. You might remember floppy disks. So here's an example of a three and a quarter inch floppy disk. I remember when I was young, we had bigger ones, but let's not worry about how old I am. The moral of the story is. That when you wanted to share data from, for instance, one computer to another, you'd have to copy a file onto something. And then physically transport it to the other device and insert this in the other device to move the information to that device. Modern day example would be a USB drive like this. So as an example, I would plug it into a computer, copy the data onto it, go to the other computer, plug it in. Copy the data from the USB drive to the computer. Now, that's okay if we physically located close to each other. But it doesn't work if you're on the other side of the world. Trying to post stuff like this is just a nightmare. It makes much more sense to have everything available electronically. Through a network. Now, networks vary in size. You could have a small network perhaps at home. Or a very, very large network like the internet which has millions of devices connected to it. But the simplest type of network consists of only two devices with another device. So networks don't have to be very complicated. They can be very simple. As an example, two PCs connected by an ethernet cable. Or language or a way to communicate. So just like a human language, I'm copying ethernet cables or fiber cables or wifi. But the next piece is communication protocols. What is a communication protocol? It's essentially a language or a way to communicate.
Yeah, and that's what the, um. A lot of the standardization and stuff like that was very necessary for where we're at right now to, um. The point of, you know, that we were going over port numbers and stuff like that, you know. This is the reason why standardization was so important. That way, things knew how to communicate with each other. There's no point of, um. No point in creating a network if nothing knows where to send, send the freaking traffic or how to get the freaking traffic, how to identify the freaking traffic. Or how to even get to a fucking webpage, how to get to that server, anything else. Uh, there has to be some standard that we're all following. Or nothing will work.
Kate, so just like a human language, I'm speaking English here. There are various rules and conventions for the way that we speak and communicate. In computer networks, we have similar rules for how information is communicated. So as an example, one of the most common communication protocols that we use is IP, IP version four specifically. We also have IPv6 or IP version six, but Internet Protocol version four is the most common protocol that's been used for many, many years. It defines the way that devices talk. There are many protocols out there. You may have heard of some. Like HTTP or hypertext transfer protocol, which is how we send traffic through the web. We also have secure HTTP or HTTPS or also known as SSL. This is basically a secure version of HTTP. So when you go to websites such as youtube.com, the protocol used here between your phone or the language used between your phone. And the YouTube servers is IP version four as well as HTTPS or SSL. Your web browser is using the protocol HTTPS to communicate with the server and to actually send the traffic on the internet. We're using IP version four. Don't worry too much about that. The moral of the story is, we use protocols or languages to communicate with one another. Humans use, for instance, English or another language. Computer devices use IP version six and other protocols such as FTP. HTTP, DNS and other protocols that you may or may not have heard of.
And we're gonna get into the protocols and stuff like that, um, you know, just to, again. Refresh our minds. Refresh our minds on them now, let's just get. Again, guys, we're gonna be skipping around, this is the, um, again, this is gonna be the accelerated course. Um, to try to pick up thing, you know, just to get back remembering things. And I forgot a lot more than I remember, I tell you that much.
Physical topology, that's how devices are physically connected together, as well as a logical topology. Logical topologies, as I'm showing you here, are used a lot in networking. This icon or symbol represents a PC or laptop in this case, same over here. In this most simple of topologies, we are connecting the two laptops or PCs using an ethernet cable. If we look at the physical topology, we've got a Windows laptop here, I'll connect a network adapter to the computer. Second Windows laptop, connect the network adapter to that one and plug them in. We now have a network between these two computers, in a logical topology, we can see how data flows through the network. Now, not much happens here, all we're gonna be doing is sending traffic or data from one.
And impact a tracer, um, you know, we're gonna be able to, to see that. I'll show you guys how to do all that too, once we get to it.
PC to the other, there's nowhere else to go, and this would be a very boring network if you could only talk to one person. So how did they change that? So years ago, they created what was called a bus network. We have a network share called ten base five and ten base two. This means speed as in ten megabits per second, please note, this is not megabytes per second. A bit is one binary value, so one bit, which could either be a zero or a one. Bytes are eight values, so when we talk about megabytes on a hard drive as an example, or a gigabyte of data. That is different to megabits per second. Baseband means that only one signal can be sent across the cable at any time, so only one person could talk, and this gives us the length of the cable. Now, often I find that when people are shown a bus topology like this, it gets really confusing, because all they see is the logical topology that looks like this. How on earth does a PC as an example connect to a cable like this and this one connect to a cable like this in a straight line? Doesn't seem to make sense if we think about topologies today, so going back to our network like this. What they did years ago is essentially, say, why don't we connect more PCs or devices directly to the cable? And they literally made a hole in the cable, here's an example of that, this is an example of ten base five. And what we do here is we make a hole in the cable and pierce the cable so that we can get access to the network. So any device that needs to access the network is connecting to copper inside of this cable. Basically piercing through the outer core to the cable, now, the way this part was connected from the PC. To the network was using what was called a drop cable, now, you don't have to know the details of this for the CCNA. I just wanna explain topologies, like what a bus topology actually looks like, let's move these Windows laptops away. So here I've got two old computers, a gateway computer and a Dell computer, how they would connect to the network is using a drop cable like this. You would have to, and this is a nightmare, fortunately, they got rid of it, you would have to connect a computer like that to its network interface card. And then you would connect it to the network like this, something like that, and notice that's already clipped out, they had connectors here to stop them clipping out. The cable to the transceiver, that would pierce the ten base five or thick net cable. And you'd have multiple devices doing the same, so this was like one long cable. And where you have black spots like this, that's where you would pierce the cable and connect your devices to the network. Absolute nightmare to work with this cable, there were a lot of problems with this network, number one, if the cable broke, it destroyed your network. So if that cable broke, this device over here couldn't talk to this device. But what actually made it worse is at the end of these cables, they had to have what were called terminators to stop the signal bouncing back. If you didn't do that or didn't have that, it would destroy your network. So let's say PC one over here wants to send traffic to PC two, what would happen is, traffic would be sent to the network through the drop cable. That would be transmitted across the cable, and if there wasn't a terminator here, the signal would bounce back. And cause a collision in the network, which would basically destroy the network, hence it's called baseband, so ten base five. Only one signal can traverse the wire at any given time, only one person can speak, so there were big issues with this topology. This cable is very, very difficult to work with, not easy to use, not easy to bend, it's very, very thick, hence called thick net. If a break.
Yeah, he's gonna get into some of the other different topologies. Stuff like that, yeah, so this is still worthwhile to kinda go through a little bit. Just kinda refresh my memory and all that stuff.
Happens in the cable, network dies, if the terminators are removed from the end of the network, network dies, absolute nightmare. Devices had to be connected to the network by you making a hole in the cable. Can you imagine this cable in the roof and you having to climb up there, drill holes and basically stab the cable? So that you could get access to the network, absolute nightmare, okay, so this is the logical topology, bus network. Ten base five was replaced with ten base two, this is what that looks like, much easier to work with cables like this. But the idea here is, once again, it's a bus topology, it's like one long cable. So in this example, I've got the two PCs once again, notice these connectors here, I've also got a Cisco router here, a very old router. And I could connect, transceiver there, that gives me a ten base two connector. So at the end here, I've got a terminator, this is an example of a ten base two terminator. Bit of a nightmare, once again, what, what you'd have to do is put the terminator on the cable, connect that like that. And connect that over there, and then extend the network by connecting to the T connector. So that's a T connector, and then you would connect it like this, so basically, that's one long cable. Notice here, we don't have the drop cables like we used to have in the old days. We're simply connecting to the PC using a T connector, but it's the same idea, at the end, we have to have terminators.
So what he's, what he's getting along with all this is, is these other topologies, um. What he's creating in this is um. A bus topology where you would have, you know, one, one long segment. Uh, eat, and then the host was connecting on, on this one long segment. And there was no intelligence or anything to this, um, to the segment. This is just traffic, it's just an open highway, pretty much, of traffic running through it, um. Which is just madness, pretty much every, everything is going, it's just getting dump it into everything, pretty much. Um, you know, this, this host is getting, you know. This host is packets the same and vice versa, and it's just everybody's getting everything. There would be no such thing as privacy in, in a network like this, the information, everybody would get the information, it was just, just open wide, wide openness. Um, so that's, when he's talking bus, it's pretty much like a straight line, everybody's tapped into. And it's just the, the amount of, the, the way the traffic, there's no intelligent to the traffic, not at all, there's nothing, no MAC addressing, nothing like that.
To this, it would destroy the network, this device could obviously not talk to these devices, and because there's no terminator. Signals would bounce back and basically cause collisions, which would destroy the network. Remember, the concept is, this is baseband, only one device can talk at any given time. If two devices speak, we will have a collision in the network. So the idea is, we want devices to communicate, we could connect them directly, but if we wanted to extend the network. We could connect them using a bus topology, not such a great way of doing it, this once again is the physical topology, this is actually how it looks. This is a logical topology, in my example here, we haven't got as many devices, we've only got PC one, PC two. And then this would be a Cisco router, so we've only got three devices, that's our physical topology, here's our logical topology. Fortunately, we got rid of ten base five and ten base two. And we replaced it with UTP or unshielded twisted pair, so this stuff is no longer used today, you're gonna come across.
Still, one of the most common um, networking cables, copper cables, is UDP, so.
Various types of ethernet cables, here's an example of flat UTP, so much easier to work with this cable than.
Oh, wait, twisted pair.
These cables or ten base five, but you always need to remember the difference between the logical topology and a physical topology. So we got rid of ten base two and ten base five, and we replaced it with ten base T, unshielded twisted pair cabling, looks like this. You might see different variations of it, but the important thing to note is, at the ends, we have RJ forty five connectors. There's actually another name for these connectors, but if you work in networking and the real world, people will refer to these as RJ forty five connectors. The topology changed as well to a star topology, so rather than one long cable, we now connect to a hub. Here's an example of an ethernet hub, this is not a switch, this is a hub. And what we would do is connect our devices using UTP cabling like this, so different.
And I'm pretty sure he's gonna get into next, the difference between a hu- what a hub and a switches, again. A hub topology, um, which. So you would have your hub, and then you would have, um. Obviously, like, this, these would be your host out here, um, this is your, you know, what they would. Kinda said with like a star topology, I guess in some words, as he's covering it in its simplest terms. Um, kinda look like a star, this is a retitled star, but starting nonetheless, um, and same thing. Similar to a, a bus topology, with the hub, there's still no intelligence, yes, there's still no, uh, MAC addressing, um. Tables or anything like that, um, this still sends the traffic everywhere. You know, and there could be collisions, and shit can get messed up.
Different cables could be used to connect to different devices in the network, all connected to a central device, hence the term star topology. So this is a star topology because we have the central device, and then we have stars coming out or radiating out of that central device. And our PCs are connected to the star using an individual cable like this. The advantage of that is, let's say this blue cable has a break in it, so something goes wrong with this blue cable, it doesn't affect the gray and black cables. Whereas when it was a bus topology, if there was a break anywhere in the cable, the entire network would break. Now, you need to be careful with what a physical network looks like versus a logical network. Notice here, just to show you some more examples, we've got another Netgear hub here with many more ports. Here's a Cisco Fast Hub four hundred series, these are hubs at the top, they're not switches. These devices at the bottom are switches, and I'll talk about switches in a moment, and the difference between these, these are hubs that. Allow us to build a star topology, that's what it looks like physically, if you like, but logically, it's actually a bus topology, so traffic actually.
Right, exactly, there's no intelligence to it, there's still collisions all over the place.
In that, when one device sends traffic, it's sent to all devices in the network. The reason for that is, if traffic is sent on one port, let's say, I have a PC connected to this port on the hub. When traffic arrives from this Windows computer, let's say, traffic is sent along the cable to the hub. And that traffic is replicated out of all other ports except the port on which it was received. So if I had twenty other devices, let's say, connected to this twenty four port hub, all twenty devices would receive the traffic, because traffic that arrives in one port. Is flooded is the term, or replicated out of all other ports, this is known as a multi-port repeater. This device is a dumb device, it doesn't understand the traffic that it's receiving, it doesn't realize which MAC address the traffic is going to, it just simply replicates it out of all ports. Hence, multi-port repeater, we have multiple ports, multi-port, and we just repeat the signal out of all other ports, except the port in which it arrives. From a collision point of view, this is a problem, because let's say PC one in our topology sends traffic to PC two. So traffic is sent to the network, but at the same time, PC five over here also sends traffic to PC three. That traffic will be sent across the logical cable, and there will be a collision here. And when there's a collision, all devices on a bus network or on a hub network like this have a random back off timer. So they randomly back off and then try again, this is known as carrier sense, multiple access collision detection. They will detect when there's a collision, carrier sense says that before they transmit traffic onto the network or data on.
So what he. So the terminology he just brought up was KS. Collision sense, what did he say? Um, slash CD, um, collision detection.
Into the network, they should listen to make sure that no, before they trans. Again, this is known as carrier sense, multiple access collision detection.
Carrier sense, multiple access, carrier sense, multiple access, carrier sense, multiple access, collision detection. Just getting that terminology.
Sense says that before they transmit traffic onto the network or data onto the network, they should listen to make sure that no one else is speaking. Multiple devices can access the network at any time, in other words, multi-access. There isn't a central device controlling who can speak, that's different, for instance, to a token ring network, and he has an example of a token ring switch. Where a device can only send traffic when it has a token, this is known as a ring topology. Physically, it doesn't look like a ring, but logically, it is a ring topology, but as you can see over here, hopefully, it says, smart desk stream. Token ring switch, this is totally different to ethernet, it's token ring, not ethernet. Or in a mainframe environment, the main device or mainframe controls who can talk, that's different in ethernet. Anyone can talk at any time, but before they talk, they need to make sure that no one else is speaking. But let's say both PC one over here and PC five speak at the same time, they both check to see if anyone is speaking at the moment, no one is. So they both transmit traffic at the same time, traffic is sent across the network and there's a collision. Then we have collision detection and the devices back off and then try again later. Now, sometimes when I show topologies like this and explain some of this technology, people tell me, no one uses hubs today. But you need to understand this kind of technology because wifi acts in many ways like a hub. But wifi devices are still sharing the same spectrum, and if you have a lot of devices on your wifi, it will slow things down. So in a bus topology and a hub topology, we have ten megabits per second, that's the speed. But this is actually shared between all the devices, and it actually gets worse, so if you have five devices like you, in theory. Two megabits per second is what you get, but because of collisions, you actually only get about thirty percent utilization. So it's ten megabits per second, times thirty percent, let's say, three megabits per second, shared by the number of devices, so divide that by five. You get very little bandwidth, so ten base two, ten base five wasn't great, hubs weren't great, because even though it's a start apology. We have all the devices connecting to a central device like this, logically, it still acts like a bus where collisions take place. It's a shared medium, so if we even had a hundred megabits per second hub here, you're still only getting about thirty percent utilization. All the bandwidth is shared between all the devices, so it's a hundred meg shared between the.
So when we get into, you know, more technical, uh, actual designing. Of topologies and stuff like that, we'll have to remember stuff like that, you know.
Devices, not a hundred megabits per second each, this is known as a single collision domain because a collision anywhere affects the entire network. If PC one sends a message to PC two and three sends a message to five, and a collision takes place. Collision here affects everyone, single collision domain, it's also known as a single broadcast domain. Because a broadcast sent by any device is received by everyone else. Single broadcast domain, in networking, we have what are called unicasts, broadcasts and multicast. A unicast is one-to-one communication, so one device broadcast, single broadcast domain. In networking, we have what are called unicasts, broadcasts and multicast. A unicast is one-to-one communication, so one device talking to one device, a.
So I guess that would be a form of communication, not so much messaging, messages.
Broadcast is one device talking to everyone, so when a broadcast is sent onto the network, who receives it? I'll get into the details in a separate video, but basically, it's a message going to everyone, a multicast is a. A multicast is a message.
Communication method. Because the method could have multiple messages in the side of the method.
Message sent to a subgroup of people. So as an analogy, think of email, when I send an email to you, that's a unicast. One person talking to one person or one device talking to one device. A broadcast would be a message sent to the entire company, so an email sent to everyone in the entire company. A multicast is like where you subscribe to an email newsletter. So only some people receive the email, not everyone receives the message.
So it's a method. It's a method of communication. That. Other communication that. Did take messaging?
When P C one over here sends a broadcast, that's received by everyone in the network. This is a single broadcast domain, single collision domain and single broadcast domain. Now, just like with a bust apology, this is a single collision domain. If P C one sends traffic to P C four and at the same time P C two sends traffic to P C six. A collision is gonna take place and that affects the entire network. Remember, this looks like a star but acts like a bus. This is also a single broadcast domain because a broadcast sent by any one device is received by all the other devices in the topology. Again, this looks like a star but acts like a bus network. Broadcast, unicast, doesn't matter, multicast is sent to everyone in the topology. Because when a hub receives traffic on one port, it replicates the traffic out of all other ports. Single collision domain.
Replicates it out on all ports, a hub. Yeah, this is very, very basic, very, very, very basic level stuff, just trying to get back into it, guys. No judgies. Ain't gonna judge you, don't judge me.
Single broadcast domain, not great. Now, after hugs, bridges were developed and this really changed networking. Here's an example of a bridge. Switches are very similar to bridges in that they learn where MAC addresses are in the topology. There are differences between a bridge and a switch and I'll talk about that right now. But first, I want to show you that bridges actually existed. This is a physical bridge. People sometimes complain that I show all the devices in my videos, but understand that even today, in a very modern switch like this, a ninety two hundred series switch. It still refers to a root bridge in spanning tree. So you'll see the term.
Yeah, you're still seeing that.
Bridge in spanning tree, and that's because spanning tree ran on a bridge like this. Bridges and switches learn where devices are in the topology, they learn the MAC addresses of devices and only forward traffic out of specific ports. Based on where the MAC address is, huge improvement in networks. Some differences between bridges and switches is bridges do things in software, switches do things in hardware, they have what are called application-specific integrated circuits.
Hmm, so there's your answer, kind of, that is, bridges do things by software, switches do things by hardware.
So A S X allows them to move traffic very, very quickly in hardware rather than using a central C P U. On some switches, traffic can be moved from one port to another using chips directly on the ports rather than going to a central processing unit. Whereas on a bridge, it was done in software, everything had to be done via a central C P U. There are also fewer ports on a bridge, so as an example, notice this bridge only has two ports. Whereas this switch has twenty four ports, so you'll get twenty four port, forty eight, and switches with many, many more ports today. More ports on switches, works with hardware, bridges, fewer ports, uses software. They both, however, use MAC addresses to discover where devices are and then forward traffic according to the MAC addresses that have been discovered. That reduces the collisions in our network and gives us greater throughput. So if P C one sends traffic to P C four as an example, let's assume the MAC address of P C one is A, MAC address of P C four is B. MAC addresses are forty eight bits in length, written hexadecimal, I'll just keep it very simple here. P C one sends traffic to P C four. The bridge will learn where the MAC addresses are of the devices, initially, it'll flood the traffic out of all ports.
Yeah, and you'll see, again, you'll see when we start getting into labbing here, very, very, very shortly. You'll be able to see, um, the packets flow, flow through it and you'll, you'll be able to see when, when. Like the broadcast goes out on some of these and, um, you'll see as the, you know, the, uh. ARP tables and stuff like that get filled up and how they get filled with the MAC dressing and all that stuff and does all the port mapping.
Ports until P C four replies and the bridge learns where the device.
And you'll see those, you'll see those packets that are sending all those informations. It's almost like using Wireshark on the line. It's, yeah, it's real cool.
But once it's learnt where devices are, all traffic sent from P C one to P C four. Is only sent out of this port, let's assume it's port one, two, three, four, five and six. Traffic is only sent out of port four. P C five, P C six, P C two and P C three do not see the traffic sent from P C one to P C four. Because the bridge has a MAC address table and has learnt that A is on port one. And B, the MAC address of P C four is on port four. And excuse my bad handwriting, hopefully that makes sense. At the end of the day, traffic is sent directly to that device. When P C three sends traffic to P C six, once the MAC address table is updated. That traffic is forwarded directly between those two devices without interfering with others and the same is true for P C one and P C four. So in a topology like this, if a collision takes place, it doesn't affect the entire network. And we actually have here one, two, three, four, five, six collision domains. It is, however, a single broadcast domain because if a P C sends a broadcast, that's received by everyone in the topology. So six collision domains, a single broadcast domain. Our switches are very much the same as bridges. In a topology like this, we have one, two, three, four, five, six collision domains. A collision on any link here only affects that link, doesn't affect the other links. Because the switch, just like a bridge, learns where everyone is in the topology and only forwards traffic out of certain ports. If traffic is sent from P C one to P C four, just like a bridge, the traffic is only sent out of the relevant port. Once the MAC address table is populated, we'll talk about that in a lot more detail later. But basically, the switch will learn that A is on port one, B is on port four in a topology like this. And will only forward traffic out of the relevant ports. When traffic is sent from P C four to P C one, it'll only be sent out of port one. Because the switch has learnt where devices are in the topology. But just like with a bridge, this is a single broadcast domain. If a broadcast is sent into the topology, all devices in the network receive that traffic, so every device here will receive the broadcast. The broadcast is sent out of all ports except the port in which it's received. So this network consists of a single broadcast domain and six collision domains. I'll be showing you that practically in more detail later so that you can actually see how the traffic flows in the topology. For now, just try and get an understanding of how this works. A big advantage of switches and why we use them is they give us many ports. In other words, we can connect many devices to the network. You get different sized switches, so as an example, this switch only has eight ports. This switch has twenty four ports as an example. Again, you get switches with many, many more ports. But these switches at the top are examples of unmanaged switches, these are managed switches. Unmanaged switches tend to be a lot cheaper than managed switches, but you can't change the configuration of the switch. You get it as it was made by the manufacturer, this is an example of a Cisco.
And for the most part, you know, when you come across, um, managed switches. It's almost getting into the layer three switches, um, which can do some routing, stuff like that, that's, you know. Some of those switches are very powerful, super powerful switches.
Cisco switch, this is a T P link switch. You simply plug in your devices, the MAC address table of the switch is populated and it learns where devices are in the topology. But you can't change anything, but works a lot better than a hub or previous technologies. With managed switches, managed switches tend to be more expensive, but give you the option to configure them. You can change the configuration of a managed switch. So as an example, you could, and we'll talk about this later, create.
And that's when he's gonna get into V L A Ns and stuff like that and breaking, segmenting. Submitting, segmenting our network. You know, this is usually internally on, uh, private networking. When you're breaking off departments, um, breaking off, you know, floors, whatever the case. Maybe, um, depending on the structure of your organization.
What are called V L A Ns or virtual local area networks, where you stop broadcasts from going through the entire switch. So you could say, these ports belong to one V LAN, these ports belong to another V LAN. Broadcast sent on these ports stay here, they don't go out of these ports. Don't worry too much about that, lots to cover. Moral of the story is managed switches allow you to change the configuration of the switch to give you better security, to manage traffic better. Unmanaged switches, you get what the manufacturer has given you, you can't change the configuration. You can expand the size of your network. Now, routers do many things, but one of their most important jobs is to connect our local network to other networks. The whole idea with networking is that we can talk to other devices, not just our local network, we wanna get information from YouTube as an example, watch YouTube videos. Or we wanna read the news, we wanna get information from other networks. So in a topology like this, we have a router that connects us to the internet and the way that that connection is done can be different. As an example, something that's become really popular recently is Starlink. On the Starlink router, I have an ethernet connector. So I could connect my laptop as an example to this connector. So this is connected to the satellite dish and to the Starlink router. But you may wanna connect this to an ethernet switch, such as this switch, to give you more ports. So rather than connecting to the Starlink router using just wifi, you could connect to the Starlink router using ethernet. In a similar way to what I've shown here. So as an example, this could be our Starlink router, this is the internet, we're accessing that through satellites. So here's an example, I've got the satellite dish that would connect us to the internet via satellites. And on this side, we've got an ethernet connection to our switch. And then we can connect multiple PCs to the Starlink router. We could do that using wifi, but you may wanna run multiple access points or more devices using ethernet. And that's what this gives you, so that's very typical of a home network.
And you can create a whole, whole network just with Starlink. Obviously, you're all gonna be sharing, sharing that traffic, sharing that data that it could go through. But I believe it's pretty, you know, if you do it right, still have some pretty decent speeds.
They have something similar at home, where you have your PCs connected directly to a switch or directly to a router. That connects you to the internet using something, which could be, as an example, satellites, it could be five G. This is a five G router, here's a Cisco four G router. So in the same way, I could connect my switch to this router on the LAN port. Or local area network port allows me to connect the five G router to a switch that gives me many, many ports. And then the way I get to the internet in this case is five G. Or on the Cisco router as an example, it has some built-in ethernet ports. I could expand that with a switch and this connects me to four G. So this is a four G Cisco router. Or in this example with this Cisco router, it has an ethernet WAN port. So in that case, you may be connecting to fiber, you might have fiber to your home as an example. Or on this router here, it has a D S L port, so you'd connect a telephone cable.
I actually got fiber out here where I just moved out, um. Possibly, gotta look into it, but possibly get, you know, pretty good uplink here. I'm surprised that's available.
Internet using ADSL as an example. This is an eighty two hundred series Cisco router, much bigger router. And once again, the way that we're gonna get to the internet is via ethernet, so this would need to connect to a modem that provides fiber as an example. So the basic idea here is my router allows my local area network or LAN. To connect to the WAN or wide area network using some kind of technology. Could be Starlink, could be five G, it could be fiber, it could be a telephone line. There are lots of options and in the old days, we used to use serial links as an example or leased lines. So you may still come across that in your studies or in the real world. Serial links have been replaced in many cases with ethernet and other technologies. Now, a company may have many sites, here's an example with just two sites. We've got PCs connected to a switch, say switch one, which in turn is connected to router one, which in turn is connected to the internet. Here's another site, we've got router two, switch two and some PCs, the idea here.
So he's kind of bringing up the concept of when you have an organization that spans, you know. Multiple buildings, states, you know. Geologically, you know, um, when it's broken apart over the internet. You still wanna create a internal, um, private network within that company. And, um, you have to create it through the internet by creating tunnels. Virtual tunnels to the other sites. Um, so it's almost like you're connecting them to your private, uh, network, but through the public internet.
Is traffic is routed from one network to another. So routers route pass from our network, for instance, to the internet. And the internet is made up of many routers, many, many routers in the internet with lots and lots of routes. But the idea here is we are routing from our local network to the WAN. And on this side, we're routing from the WAN to the LAN. So we've got a LAN this side, we've got the WAN wide area network, and on this side, we've got another LAN. Now, from a traffic point of view, important to note that each interface on a router is a separate broadcast domain. If broadcasts are sent by any of these devices, the router will not forward the broadcast onto the internet. And in the same way, if a broadcaster is received by router two on this interface, that.
And the reason why that's important is obviously, um, if the broadcast went the other way, the internet as we know it would explode. It would literally melt, everything would melt.
Cast is not forwarded to the local area network. Every interface that's a routed interface on a router is a separate broadcast domain as well as a separate collision domain. Now, the world these days is kind of blurred, here's an example of a home router running ADSL and some ethernet ports. One of them is actually marked as LAN WAN and the others are LAN. This is a router, but it acts like an access point with wifi. It acts like a switch in some ways because traffic on the LAN is switched between ports. But then routed to the WAN interface, let's say this interface. On a Cisco router, something similar could be done, on this router, these are switched interfaces and these would be routed interfaces. So depending on the router, and it also depends on the switch, some interfaces can act like a routed interface and some interfaces can act like a switched interface. Router interfaces stop broadcasts, switched interfaces will forward broadcasts. What is this device?
That's another thing to remember, router interfaces will stop broadcasts, switch interfaces will. Pass broadcast.
This is a firewall, or as Cisco call them these days, a Cisco secure firewall. This specific device is a Cisco Firepower ten ten, little firewall. But notice it's got some switch ports on it that allows you to connect to the internet using an ethernet connection. Firewalls essentially protect us from bad actors or bad people trying to hack into our network. Now, in a home environment as an example, you may have a little router like this. And again, this is what gets confusing about home routers like this, they combine lots of functionality. This typically has a built-in firewall, but how good that is is really up to debate. It's a router, it's an access point, it's a switch and it's also a firewall. Now, this may be okay for some home users, but in a enterprise or larger business, you're gonna wanna have a dedicated firewall. And this obviously is a very small firewall in a small or medium-sized business or branch office. Very small firewall, Cisco have much larger firewalls than this for large enterprises. A device like this these days has a lot of intelligence built into it. You can do simple things where you say traffic is allowed from your inside network, so your secure LAN, to the WAN or the internet. But traffic is not permitted from the internet to the LAN unless it's an answer to traffic from the LAN to the internet. Or what we call the inside interface and the outside interface. So in a network like this, you may have some PCs connected to a switch, which in turn is connected to a router. Which has a firewall in front of it that connects you to the internet. Now, this is possible if you, for instance, got fiber to the office or your home. And you are connecting the firewall via ethernet to your modem or device that your ISP is installing at your premises. Now, that's not always possible because this connection could be something else than ethernet. What happens if this is ADSL or some other type of technology? Maybe using Starlink or what about five G, something else for this connection. In that case, the firewall is connected to the router and the router connects you to the internet. So again, this could be a five G router, this could be a Starlink router. Some kind of router is used here that gives you physical connectivity to the internet and your firewall is behind your router. So traffic arrives from the internet as an example, is sent to the firewall, is permitted or denied to your internal network. This may be your outside interface and this may be your inside interface. And you may also have something here like a third interface, which is your DMZ. Where you have servers or other devices that people can access through the firewall. The physical installation of firewall behind router or firewall in front of the router really depends on what kind of internet connection you have. And whether you want the router to be in front of the firewall or the firewall in front of the router. So it's really up to you how you decide to install this, but a big determining factor is what. But a big determining factor is what type of connection do you have to the internet? This couldn't connect to Starlink directly. You'd have to connect this to a Starlink router, which connects you to the satellites and the internet. Now, one of the features that a firewall may have is something called IDS or Intrusion Detection System or IPS or Intrusion Protection System. It's IDS or IPS. Basically allows us to.
What about IPS? You're in a bowel syndrome.
Bad guys or bad traffic and then do something about it. And I'll give you an analogy that will hopefully help you remember the difference between the two. Think of an IDS as a small dog. You're sleeping at night, sound asleep. And suddenly, someone decides to break in. So there's an intruder in your house. What does a small dog do? It sniffs that there's an intruder and then it barks. In other words, it alerts you that there's an intruder. So it's an intrusion detection system. The dog detects that there's an intruder and then notifies you or alerts you that there's an.
And the reason why I'm saying it like that is, is gonna later get into some of the other more specific terminology, the actions, specific things.
Intruder and then you can do something about it. An IDS running in a firewall will detect that there's malicious activity on your network and then will alert you and you need to do something about it. Think of an IPS or Intrusion Protection System as a very large dog compared to an IDS, which is a small dog. An IPS, Intrusion Protection System goes a step further. You're sleeping at night, an intruder breaks in. The dog, in this case, a very large dog, doesn't just alert you by barking that there's a intrusion, but it also protects you by attacking the intruder. So an example with a firewall would be, traffic is going through the firewall. With an IPS, traffic has to go through the IPS system. So the traffic is going through the firewall and the IPS system. When there's an attack, it blocks the attack, so stops it. Whereas an IDS is normally sitting out of band, it's not in the flow of traffic, it's sitting next to it, it gets copies of the traffic and can only alert you that there's a problem, can't. The traffic is going through the that there's a intrusion, but it also protects you by attacking the intruder. So an example with a firewall would be, traffic is going through the firewall. With an IPS, traffic has to go through the IPS system. So the traffic is going through the firewall and the IPS system. When there's an attack, it blocks the attack, so stops it. Whereas an IDS is normally sitting out of band, it's not in the flow of traffic, it's sitting next to it, it gets copies of the traffic and can only alert you that there's a problem, can't stop the attack.
So he was saying is, like if you had an IDS, I guess that's something that's out of band, so what he was kind of letting to is like, say this is your router, um, this is the firewall right here. And the router's connected to the big internet, this is the big internet right here, here's your firewall right here. Uh, but there's also, say, a switch somewhere right here and there's a connection, obviously. There, it's, it's off of, it's disband, it's off of the main flow of traffic where there's still ways. It'll sniff it, detect it, uh, but it can't intercept it because that traffic's already going where it's going. It'll, it'll know that there's something bad on it, but, uh, that traffic's still gonna go there.
IPS will stop the attack and IDS will just alert you that there's an attack and you'd have to do something about it. So hopefully that helps you. IDS, small dog, IPS, large dog. Now, many of our devices such as laptops, MacBooks and phones don't have ethernet connectivity. In other words, we are not going to physically connect the laptop or the phone to the network. What we're gonna use is wifi. And I think for most of us, we know what wifi is. In our home environment, once again, with a little router like this, we'll be connecting to the wifi router. It'll be taking the signal from.
Wifi itself, I mean, is complicated. I mean, wifi in its own, is its own little animal. But for, you know, for the most part, how I understand it, it's, you know, just radio to, to, to radio, uh, radio frequency, um, there's certain bands, um, obviously wifi, um, you know, wifi, what are we on, wifi six or wifi five right now is a certain band frequency that allows data to flow at higher rates, um, which now, that's why we're getting these higher and higher uploads and download rate, uh, speeds now with wifi that we didn't get before. But obviously, you know, some of the concerns and everybody's always, you know, we're gonna microwave ourselves with wifi is, is as we progressively continue to utilize certain bands more and more and more and more to send more and more data through these frequency bands, is that going to be doing something, you know? That's pretty much what I know about wifi. It's pretty much our radio, radio interceptor, you know?
Wifi to ethernet to get us onto the internet and back again or whatever your WAN connection is. But the idea here is that we are connecting through the air to the network. But at some point, that's gonna go through a wide connection, which could be copper, could be fiber, could be something else. Now, these are access points that I'm going to use in the course. From a Cisco point of view, you have what are called autonomous access points and lightweight access points. An autonomous access point basically is configured by itself. It has its own brain, if you like. So this access point would be configured individually. I would connect to it using a web browser as an example and then configure the access point. But if I had many access points, rather than just one or three, but let's say fifty or a hundred or five hundred access points, it's gonna be a lot of work to individually configure those access points. So in that case, I wanna use what's called a lightweight access point. But these are actually lightweight access points. They can function as autonomous access points. But in this example, we are going to use a wireless LAN controller to configure those access points. So rather than configuring, let's say, a hundred access points individually or five hundred access points individually, we are gonna configure them through a controller. We're gonna use a wireless LAN controller to configure the devices. So in that case, we would connect it to an ethernet switch such as this one and then power of the ethernet would be used to power these access points. You don't really wanna be going into the ceiling and run power cables to your access points to configure them. You'd rather have them powered through the ethernet cable. So a switch would provide POE or power over ethernet to the access point that powers the access point, but also allows ethernet connectivity between the access point and the switch and to the controller.
And POE is super cool, man. I mean, I think, think about, I seen something the other day, we can, um, that you could run a Raspberry Pi over, um, POE now, uh, wow, I mean, that's just amazing, you know?
In this course, I'll show you how to set up the WLC or Wireless LAN Controller so that you can configure the access points. You need to know wifi for the CCNA exam. It's one area where people seem to really struggle, so I'm gonna spend a lot of time showing you how to set this up. And then you can configure it in Packet Tracer as an example. The problem with Packet Tracer is, again, it has some limitations and doesn't set this up properly. So I wanna show you with a physical device how it actually works. So in our topology, once again, we've got PCs connected via wifi to the access point. And the access point is taking the transmission and sending it on the ethernet network to the internet. So here we've got wifi, here we've got ethernet between the access point and the switch. And then between the switch and the router, we'd be using ethernet typically. And then this could be fiber, it could be Starlink, it could be five G or some other technology that gets you to the internet. I think that's understandable for a lot of us. We are connecting using a wifi device such as a phone to the access point. In this case, it's a router that has an access point built into it, takes us to the internet using a WAN connection. Or we can connect to local devices using the LAN connections. So again, in our topology.
All right, that kinda covers. So that, that, that one of the topologies, um, just a kind of quick dive into that, which was good. I appreciate that, David.
Thank you, David. Once again, thank you, David.
Um, all right, I'm going to break for a quick cigarette. Smoke the house. Somebody I know would kill me if I did that. So I'm gonna take a quick cigarette break and I'll be right back, guys. Shouldn't be too long. Trump the music for you guys. So you guys can be entertained. Are you not entertained? Drop, uh, Big Dave's head. Quick, see that leave? I will put the music on. So, yeah, fifty-eight. Let's go up to. Guys can rock out for a little bit. And I'll be right back. Believe you guys, a little dad joke app that I made.
Mansions with the skins of slaves. I just stomped your mud hole. With electric guitar strings. We're connected with the universe. Are you connected with the universe? Are you electric? I'm electric. Are you electric? I'm electric. We're connected with the universe. Are you connected with the universe? Are you electric? I'm electric. Are you electric? I'm electric.
I think it should be back to where it is. Everything's good, everything sounds good. Uh, where did we? Oh, there we go, that's for that. Our system board. Alright, let's uh skip down to a couple things.
I often like to say this, you can read about riding a bicycle. You can watch videos about riding a bicycle, but until you've ridden a bicycle, you can't ride a bicycle. Same thing applies to networking, the quicker that you learn to build networks, the quicker this will make sense. And the easier it will be to understand the technologies that we're talking about. Now that we've got Packet Tracer downloaded, please start it up and let's build a network together. I've already spent the money so that you don't have to, so that you can see how stuff works physically. And then compare that to Cisco Packet Tracer. Now, please make sure that you follow along and do this yourself. Don't just watch me creating topologies. Do it yourself, you're gonna learn so much more. So in Packet Tracer, let's go to switches and select thirty-six fifty and add that to our topology. And I'll zoom in here, this physical switch is the switch that we're using in Packet Tracer.
So remember guys, make sure you guys like, share and subscribe. And if you find my content um useful, if you like it. Um, if you guys can do me a favor, man, if you guys can, you know, go over and just show brothers some support. Um, it means the world to me. And uh, yeah, the more guy, you know, the more support you guys show me, the more I can continue to bring um more and more contact, you know what I'm saying, guys? Yeah, uh, but let's continue on here, um, we still got a lot of stuff to do.
This is a thirty-six fifty switch, so very similar to what we're seeing in Packet Tracer. So if I select this switch, that's what it looks like in Packet Tracer. To configure a Cisco switch, you click on CLI. But notice we told that the device must be powered on first, so we need to grab a power supply.
So what he was talking about is here in Packet Tracer, um, if you can see, let me kind of zoom in here. See, there's a, uh, there's an actual power switch on these, um, uh, devices here that this, that Packet Tracer is simulating. And this is where you have your, um, different, um, network interface cards. Okay, so all different cards, um, there's, let's see, single port, Cisco, gigabit ethernet. Let's give you some of the information about it. And yeah, the single port, serials, the serial ports. We've got a win interface, I guess covers, I think there's even, um, there's even fiber optic, some of them have fiber optic ones too that you can put in. But yeah, there's all different kinds, uh, that, uh, Packet Tracer will simulate for you. Um, you know, depending on what kind of lab you're trying to create and develop with speeds and whatnot. But again, to, just like in the real life, you know, this thing has to be powered down. So you have to come over here, physically shut off the device right here. And, uh, you know, this is where you can remove your NICS or add a NIC. Um, so come over here, we'll add a, we'll add another NIC right here. And then you'll see that, um, we go over to our configuration tab in our CLI tab. Um, you'll see these, uh, simulated NICs in the device. You know, come over here to configuration, the device is still booting up, please wait until it's finished. We'll have to give it a second until it's finished, look, it's still booting. And now it's done, so here you can see these are the NICs, this is the one we just installed right here. And, um, you know, you can come over here, you can configure the, um, you can figure the, the, the device here from the, from the, uh, the GUI here. Or, you know, we can configure it here as we were, if we were, you know, serialing into, um, the device. Very, very fresh screen here.
Apply and put it into the switch. And that's what I showed you in the previous video. We've got to take this power supply and insert it into the switch so that we can power it up. So this is the physical view, here we have a Packet Tracer physical view. And then we have the logical topology over here. So, physical topology, if you like, physical topology here. Logical topology is what we see in Packet Tracer over here. Now, the next thing we need to do is add a PC to the topology. So clicking on end devices, in this case, I'll select laptop and I'll add a laptop to the topology. And I'll add another laptop to the topology. So we've got two laptops and a switch in our topology. What I'll do is double-click on the switch and give it a name. Let's just call this switch one and let's call this laptop two and this one I'll call laptop one. Okay, so we've got a switch, we've got two laptops in our topology. Now we need to cable it up, so I'm going to select connections. And there are various types of cables here, the one that we're going to select is copper straight-through cable. That's an ethernet cable like this, this might be something that you've seen many, many times before. It's a standard ethernet cable. And what I can do now is take that copper ethernet cable, click on the PC and select fast ethernet zero. Now, a lot of modern laptops don't have ethernet ports on them. Here's an older laptop, and that's why I've got an old Windows seven laptop here. This laptop has an ethernet port right over there. So, I could connect ethernet on the laptop and then connect it to the switch as follows. So what I'm doing is selecting fast ethernet on the laptop and then clicking on the switch. I have various interfaces, USB, console, console, but I'm going to select the first ethernet interface, gigabit one zero one. A lot of this may not make sense right now, but you're gonna learn a lot.
Well, pretty much to go down to what David's kind of saying, let's come over here, we'll stack our copper straight-through, gigabit zero zero two, fast ethernet, boom. We got our first connection here in Packet Tracer, it is giving us our, our NIC. Oh, sorry, my back is cracking. Uh, some of our topology information right here, uh, showing that we have a connection. But obviously, with, with showing the, um, red arrows, there's nothing actually going on. There are no messages being sent.
As we go through the course, I'm going to repeat various things and you're going to understand those numbering systems for the interface. You're going to learn a lot as we go through the course, I just want you to get started creating networks, because you'll learn a lot more that way. So if we look at the laptop, notice here, when I zoom in, this laptop has a fast ethernet interface. So it has an ethernet port like this, so very similar to this old laptop. Again, a lot of modern laptops, like the ones that I've got over here, don't have physical ethernet ports. What you've got to do is you've got to use something like this to connect them to the network. So we've got USB on the one side and then an ethernet connector on the other side. That's how you replicate what's happening in Packet Tracer physically. But if you had an old laptop like this, or say a modern gaming laptop, which might have an ethernet port, you could connect it directly to the switch as follows. So what we'll do now is take another copy ethernet cable and I'll select the laptop, fast ethernet port, and connect that to the switch on the second gigabit ethernet interface. And what you'll notice here is it's showing the interfaces in the topology and the laptop names, et cetera. Again, if you go to options, preferences in Packet Tracer, you can decide, are you going to show the labels in the workspace? Are you going to show the device name labels? Are you going to show the model labels? So what I like to do, because I don't like the way that Packet Tracer does this, is I like to go to the top here and select place note and then I create my own interfaces. So I'll just write it as gig, as in G one zero one, on this side, G one zero two, and on this side, fast ethernet zero. And then I'll select this here so that I no longer.
To that.
Longer, I'm adding notes and then I'll go to options, preferences, and I'll remove this option. Always show port labels in logical workspace. So now I only see my own labels, which I can then move around in the topology. So that makes it easier for me and clearer for me when I set up networks. It's really up to you, you need to decide how you want to set up Packet Tracer in the way that you like. I like this, where I've got the labels here and I can move them around. I mean, you can adjust the topology as you like. So again, this is how you'd cable it in the old days, ethernet directly into the laptop, directly into the switch. But I'm not going to use an old Windows seven laptop to replicate this. I'm also not going to use an older switch like this, I'm going to use a modern switch and show you how to build this with modern devices. Okay, so now I've got two modern Windows eleven laptops, I've also got modern switches here. In this example, I've got a C ninety-two hundred CX switch and another one here. I've only powered up the one at the moment and that's the one that we'll use to build this topology together. So here's the Packet Tracer network, here's the physical network. Now, because this is a modern laptop that doesn't have ethernet ports, what I need to do is plug in the USB to ethernet converter. And now I could take my ethernet cable and plug it into, say, port one over here and then plug the other cable into the computer. Now, because I don't need such a long cable, I'll just use this little cable here. But literally, all I'm doing is taking ethernet and plugging it into the laptop. And what I've done now is move the cable under the switch, but that's how the laptop is connected to the switch. So PC is now connected, let's say this is PC one or laptop one to the switch. So the laptop is now connected to the switch, very similar to our diagram, let's say laptop one connected to the switch. Now on laptop two, I need to do something similar, in this case, this is a USB C adapter, so USB C to ethernet converter. So I can now plug that into the laptop and then plug ethernet into that to give me a connection to my switch. So I've plugged that into the laptop and I can now plug that into the switch. So I've now got two laptops connected to the switch. These two laptops are connected per our topology. Much easier to do this in Packet Tracer rather than doing this physically. But you might have done this many times in the past, where you've connected a laptop or a device to a switch. Very simple topology here, but now let's configure the devices. So, on this laptop, if I go to config, we'll see options under fast ethernet zero, including a MAC address and an IP address. Oh no, phone as an example, this is an Android phone. If I go and have a look at my settings and I look at my wifi network and the settings of the wifi network, what you'll be able to see here is information such as MAC address of this device and IP address of the device. IP version four and IP version six. So you'll see that information on your phone as an example. Or if I have a look at Windows and go and look at my settings such as network and internet settings, I can see information about my device, including its IP address. So on this interface, which is actually an additional interface on the computer, it has an IP address of ten one one six. On the other interface, which is, interfaces are just connected to the network, it doesn't have an IP address configured statically. It's using. subnet mask allocated here is two fifty-five, two fifty-five, two fifty-five zero. Router or default gateway is one nine two one six eight one dot one. So your home router would be configured, say, with this information. Your default gateway might be one nine two one six eight one dot one or something like that. In this example, I'm simply going to configure the PC with IP address one nine two one six eight one dot one. Okay, it's forcing us to specify DNS server, I'll just use eight dot eight dot eight dot eight, which is Google. And then click save and that's now been saved. So IP address is one nine two one six eight one dot one. Subnet mask for IP version four is two fifty-five, two fifty-five, two fifty-five zero. Default gateway I've configured is that, DNS server is this, IPv6 information is shown there as well. For the CCNA exam, you need to know how to open up a command prompt and use the relevant commands to show the IP address. In this case, I'll type the command ipconfig and that will show me that this interface ethernet nine has this IP address. That's the IP address that we've just configured, one nine two one six eight one dot one. Subnet mask is here, the default gateway is here. If I use the command ipconfig slash all, it'll show me more information. So scrolling up here, on this interface, here is the IP address, one nine two one six eight one dot one. Subnet mask again, default gateway again, and DNS server. What you'll also see is the physical address or MAC address of the device. That is the address automatically burned into the network card by the manufacturer, it can be changed. So, on the iPhone as an example, here is my MAC address, four E forty and ending in AB. Phones today often use what are called private wifi addresses or private MAC addresses or random MAC addresses to hide you being tracked by organizations. So the MAC address will change when you connect to different wifi networks. But for this network, I've just jumped to another network, notice the IP address is one nine two one six eight zero one fifty-five. Subnet mask is the same and router in this example is one nine two one six eight zero one. Now, don't worry if you're struggling a bit now, a lot of this is going to become clearer as I explain this multiple times. IP address is something that you configure on a device, MAC address is typically set by the manufacturer, can be changed. Now.
Again, to get back to what I was saying, um, MAC, MAC can be, um, you can definitely change your MAC address, spoof it and all kinds of other stuff. But generally, um, you don't want to be messing with that unless you've got tensions on doing other things.
At the time of this recording, I can still view information about the device through control panel. Network and internet, network and sharing center, change adapter settings. You can see various adapters here, ethernet nine is the one that we've just configured. So if I double-click on that and go to details, there's my IP address, subnet mask and default gateway. Here's another interface on the PC or laptop, that's the one over here, has this IP address, ten one one six. Now, just be aware for the moment, if you don't have a DHCP server, like we don't have here, you have to statically or manually configure the IP addresses. We will learn how to set up a DHCP server on the switch. But for the moment, on laptop one, we have to manually set up the IP address. So I'm going to set it to one nine two one six eight one dot one. And notice the subnet mask is automatically populated with two fifty-five, two fifty-five, two fifty-five zero. The MAC address is set, but I'm going to change it and I suggest you do as well to make it simple. Now, a MAC address consists of twelve hexadecimal values. This is not decimal, this is hexadecimal, we'll cover that in more detail in a moment. But notice I've made it zero 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 one.
So I'm netting and hex decimals and stuff pretty fast before.
Dot four ones, dot four ones. If you don't know what hexadecimal is, it's basically a numbering system like decimal or binary. I'll cover that in other videos. But essentially what we've done now is we've configured the device with an IP address and. But essentially what we've done now is we've configured the device with an IP address and MAC address. On the physical Windows computer, I just configured the IP address. I didn't try and change the MAC address. So going to desktop, going to command prompt, that's similar to opening up command prompt or CMD on a Windows computer. So there's physical Windows, here's Packet Tracer. I could now type the command ipconfig and it shows me my IP address, subnet mask, and it shows me that I don't have a default gateway configured at the moment. If I went to config, interface, I can see my IP address, subnet mask, et cetera. But if I go to settings, I can configure my default gateway and my DNS server. DNS or domain name system is basically a way to take a name like google.com and convert that to an IP address. We'll cover that in more detail later. But I'll set the default gateway to one nine two, one six eight, one, two fifty-four. And I'll set the DNS server to Google as an example, even though that's not what we're going to use here. But notice please, when I type ipconfig now, I see my IP address, I see my subnet mask and I see my default gateway. If I type ipconfig slash all, I see IP address, subnet mask, default gateway and now DNS server. And in addition, I see my MAC address. Make sure that you know these commands. So you need to know that ipconfig shows you your IP address on a computer as an example.
Well, obviously, commands, commands are going to differ from distro to distro. Um, always keep that in mind. Trust me, I have fallen into rabbit holes. Yeah, just keep that in mind. IPconfig might work on that. Might not work on another command line.
This case, Packet Tracer or Windows. On Linux or on macOS, they're different commands. But what we've now done is configure an IP address on this PC. Now again, if you're struggling with what I'm doing here, don't worry, I'm going to repeat this multiple times. So let's do the same thing right now on laptop two. So on laptop two, if I go to config, fast ethernet, are we using DHCP or Dynamic Host Configuration Protocol? The answer is no. We're going to statically or manually configure an IP address and in this case, I'll set it to one nine two, one six eight, one dot two. So going back to this PC and its config, fast ethernet, it had an IP address configured as one nine two, one six eight, one dot one. And on the second PC, we're configuring it as one nine two, one six eight, one dot two. You're going to come across this concept of a subnet, which is devices that are on the same network or segment is a term that we use in Ethernet. Don't worry again too much for that. Now, moral of the story is these two devices should be able to talk to each other. We'll cover that again in more detail later, but what I'll do here is I'll change the MAC address to zero, 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 two, followed by four twos, followed by another four twos. If I look on my physical ethernet PC, you'll notice it's shown as that. Physical address or MAC address is shown as that. What you'll notice is there's two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve values in hexadecimal. This is hex, notice the F here or the E or the C. That is the physical MAC address of my Windows computer. Here, I'm just going to make it easy to read by ones on the left, twos on the right, so that we know which is PC one and which is PC two. On the second PC, let's set the default gateway to one nine two, one six eight, one, two five four. And the DNS server or domain name system server to eight dot eight dot eight dot eight. Again, I'm going to go to desktop and I'm going to open up a terminal and I'm going to type ipconfig and there is my IP address, one nine two, one six eight, one dot two. We can see the sub.
Oh, I mean, I'm probably going to skip a little bit ahead. He's just generally getting into just a very, very, very simple. So he's just going into, um, obviously we already have. Everything cabled up in our little topology. Um, just like he was going over, we don't have a DHCP, THP server set up yet. That will come, um, but for right now, we're just creating just something simple. Now our router is going to be our gateway. Okay. Okay, you guys, yes, guys, can I see that? Yes, can see that. Okay, so we got, we got our router, our main router. You're going to be. Two, one, six, eight. We do your MAC address. That's on. Good, okay. Ask good. On food. That's. Ports are on. And technically. Should. Let's go to this computer, let's go to PC one. Let's go to desktop, let's go to terminal. All right. IPconfig. Guys can see it. So our idea, um, IP address is IP four address, one nine two, one six eight, dot zero, dot ten, subnet mask, two five, two five, two five, dot zero. Default gateway, one nine two, one six eight, dot zero, dot one. Okay, now let's see, can we ping our default gateway? Six eight. Dot zero, dot one. That's successful. All right, so since we can do that now, let's see if we can. Other computer, two. Not what we have, our first network.
subnet mask, we can see the default gateway. And can you remember the command to see the MAC address and the DNS server? It's ipconfig space forward slash all.
Um, let's just actually remember. So, I think, now, and again, remember this. It's not the same on every distro. By any means. Make sure you know which distro you're on first off and then know your commands. Uh, for the most part, um, help can get you pretty far with a lot of things. And here we are, we're showing our MAC address, address for this, um, our IP address, our subnet mask, our, uh, default gateway. What else we've got? TCP, we don't have a TCP server set up yet. Um, we have DNS, but we don't have an actual DNS server set up yet either. And it's just some.
Notice IP address, subnet mask, default gateway, DNS server, MAC address of the device. Same thing on this device. IPconfig slash all, we see MAC address, IP address.
Show the same thing on this PC over here. Slash all. Again, uh, just like we made on that PC, uh, MAC address is quad zero, quad zero, quad two, uh, one nine two, one six eight, dot zero, dot twenty, subnet mask, yada, yada, yada. Some information for the most part.
Et cetera. Okay. So what we've done now is configured two devices and connect them to a switch. Hopefully we'll be able to communicate from one device to the other.
Obviously, I did put a router here in this topology, um, to wrap between. But we didn't need it because I had to finish down with the switch. This switch is forwarding, um, the messages. If we say to, to connect to another router. Oh, let's.
The other, but just before I do that, let's do it on the Windows computer at the top there. And in my case, because I'm old, I like to use control panel, even though Microsoft are threatening to take it away. So I'm going to type control panel and search for that. Go to network and internet, network and sharing center, go to change adapter settings. Here are all my adapters on my computer. I've got quite a few of them. I've got multiple network cards here. This is the one we're going to configure, so ethernet two, details. The IP address shown here is a special IP address. We'll talk about that later, one sixty-nine, two fifty-four, something, something. That basically means that we haven't configured the IP address manually or it hasn't been given an IP address.
One six nine. Got that range, well, I believe that's, um. It's like a port forwarding address or something like that? Um, if somebody's in the chat, just, just give me a shout of what that one six nine, um, address represents. I believe it's port forwarding or something like that. Somewhere like your computer sends messages back to some, something strange like that.
P, so I'm going to go to properties, scroll down, double click on TCP IP and here I can configure the IP address manually as one nine two, one six eight, one dot two, my second PC. Subnet mask is automatically being filled in. I can specify my default gateway, which I'll do is that. And then I can specify my DNS server. So different way to configure a device, you should know this for the real world. Multiple ways to configure it. Again, I could have gone here, gone to settings, go to network and internet. Ethernet two is my interface, click on properties and notice here is my IP address. I could click edit and then fill in the details as I showed you on PC one or laptop one. But notice there are the details configured on the PC. Okay, so I have now got two physical computers configured with IP addresses. Both of them are connected to the switch. In Packet Tracer, I've got two laptops, virtual laptops or simulated laptops if you prefer. And hopefully what I'll be able to do now is communicate between the two of them. Now, an application that you need to learn is ping. Ping basically sends a message into the network saying, are you there? So if I ping from one laptop to the other, laptop one could send a message into the network saying, laptop two, are you there? And if laptop two is there, it will reply and say.
And I've still found ping is always the most useful way, just to find out simple connectivity, man. Someplace, sometimes that's all you really need to know is can it connect?
Yes, I'm here. So it's called an echo and echo reply. It's basically shouting, are you there?
And you'll see as, once we start, uh, take a look at these packets and stuff like that, you'll see these messages and how they, they'll set up and stuff like that.
And then the other laptop replies, yes, I'm here. And that's how you can determine if two devices can communicate, used all the time in networking. So on laptop one, I could ping the IP address of laptop two. Now, just to help you, because maybe you forget this, what you can do is take a note and put it here and say, this laptop has this IP address. And then you can say the subnet mask is that. And on this laptop, we can create a note and say the IP address is one nine two, one six eight, one dot two and the subnet mask looks like that. Let's move this around, so that laptop has that IP address, this laptop has this IP address, just so that it's easier to remember. So once again, on laptop one, I can use the command ping one nine two, one six eight, one dot two. And notice we get a reply from laptop two telling us that laptops two has received the message from laptop one and has replied to that and laptop one has received the reply. So that tells me that these two devices can see each other or communicate. Ping is used all the time in networking. So on this laptop, can I ping laptop one? Can I ping one nine two, one six eight, one dot one? And the answer is yes. Now, you may not be used to pinging IP addresses. You may just open up a web browser and then go to google.com as an example. And that is an example of a name that gets converted to an IP address. So if I go to google.com in my browser, notice the website displays. But in networks, devices don't actually use names to communicate, they use IP addresses. So until you have a DNS server configured or you manually resolve names to IP addresses, you're going to have to use IP addresses. And in networking, we typically use IP addresses. Now, please don't worry too much about this, but what I'm going to show you now is a command called nslookup that allows me to resolve a name to an IP address. So as an example, if I type nslookup google.com on my computer, you can see that Google has this IP address. I have basically resolved the name to an IP address using my DNS server. This is the server that did the resolution. If I ping google.com. If I ping google.com and then stop that on my Mac, notice the name google.com has been resolved to this IP address. Same as there, computers and networking devices don't use names for normal communication, that's for us as humans, they have names resolved to IP addresses for actual communication on the network. So again, in our example, I could ping Laptop two, and on Laptop two, just press the up key, I can ping Laptop one. That is one way to test communication between these two devices, but let's bring in a web server into the topology, so that we can actually do something that's more realistic to which. So what I've done now is add another laptop to the topology, we have to obviously plug that into the networks, I'll plug it in here. So I've got three devices now connected to my physical network, in Packet Tracer, we still only have two, so we need to add the third device to the topology. What I'm going to do is go to End Devices, and rather than adding a laptop, I'm going to add a server to the topology in Packet Tracer. So you can see it says server zero there, I'll move this up a bit. And then we need to connect the network, what type of cable do we need? We need a copper straight through cable, so I'm going to select the switch. And use the next available Ethernet interface, a gigabit Ethernet one zero three, and I'll connect that to Fast Ethernet on the server. And as you can see there, it's connected, now, we're not seeing the labels here, because I went to Options, Preferences, and uncheck Always Show the Labels. You can keep that if you prefer, it's really up to you, but what I'm going to do here is go to Notes and add Gigabit one zero three. And I'll add another note for the interface on the server. I'll select that option there, go to Options, Preferences, and remove Always Show Port Labels in Logical Workspace, again, the reason I like to do this is.
Let's do this, let's do a little messing around. Settings, default gateway. Um, this, we're going to do two six eight. Zero dot. Oops, this, DNS. Going to. Hey, we'll have. We'll have two, we'll have another server. Break this up a little bit. Zero dot. Alright, we've got a record in there. Um. Just this. This server here, it should be two two two. Let's go like in it. So, okay. And then, yeah. That's. Two two dot two. Services, six six P. Let's see, on, okay. Alright, now, let's just see if we can open up this server, dot two, and do it. Now, let's just see if we can, uh. Ping. Two one six eight. Uh, zero dot. Okay. Now, let's see if our DNS record works, uh, ping. Oops, it. It does. So, that's how the DNS record pretty much works, so, um, we pinged, um, website.com. And it came back with our IP address replying back from this server here, and I remind you, this server here is our DNS, so DNS server here. We can come here and look where I made that DNS record, so for website.com, create a record for one nine two one six eight dot zero dot two two two. Which is the server right here, as we can see, that is our IP address right there, and we're serving up, um, a HTTP, so we come over here. I'll come back to Desktop and we go to Browser. Come over to the Browser, and we put in our website.com. And we get our website to, uh, one nine two one, one nine two one six eight dot zero dot two 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 two. This is just a simple website that that server is serving for us, and we're able to connect right to it by using our DNS record that we created. In here. That's the router. So. And our DNS, so, there's our record right there that we created. Cool. So, and that's how we served, so we just served, served pretty much a static file, and I can always change, I can always add a, um. Something new to this or whatever, guys, um, just to show you guys that it's still the same thing, this BM, so, BM, BM Management, um, yeah. So, we've pretty much created a simple, very simple, uh, network with some DNS.
So that I can move the labels around myself, you don't have to do that if you don't want to. Okay, so let's add another label here, and say that this server is going to be configured with IP address one nine two one six eight one dot three with the same subnet mask. We'll be covering subnet masks in a lot of detail later, so don't worry too much about it if you're not quite sure. But there's the IP address of the server, we need to configure that obviously, so I'm going to click on the server. You can see this looks very much like a physical server, servers come in different shapes and sizes, but here's an example of a server with some hard drives in it. This is old, so you can see it looks like a floppy disk in there and a DVD or CD in the server, so quite old, and you can see the Fast Ethernet interface. Again, go to Config, and now we need to configure the IP address of the server, so Fast Ethernet zero. Let's give this a MAC address of three, so triple zero three, followed by four threes, the dot and another four threes. Static IP address or manual IP address is going to be one nine two one six eight one dot three, subnet mask is automatically configured. We can go to Settings and set our default gateway, it's not required, but you may want to fill that in, and we may want to fill in our DNS server. So just to repeat, Fast Ethernet zero, IP address is configured, subnet mask is configured, under Settings, we configured the default gateway and DNS server. Going to Desktop, Command Prompt now, I'll type ipconfig.
I'm going to skip around a little bit. Pretty much went through. You know, some of the, the first stuff. Yeah, let's just keep going over. Man, that's cool, yeah.
The best way to learn networking is just to do it, even if in the beginning it's a little bit confusing, or doesn't all make sense, you'll get this. If you just keep on learning and you keep on trying to build networks, Packet Tracer is a great way to do this. So in a previous video, I showed you how to connect two laptops and a server to a switch. I showed you the services running on the server, so as an example, if I go to Services here, we tested the HTTP and HTTPS service running on the server. We were able to connect, for instance, from a laptop, opening up a web browser to the server, so as an example, one nine two one six eight one dot three, the IP address of the server. I was able to view the website running on the server.
And I can, I can do that same thing from here, go back here, so, web browser again. And I can just put in the IP address of that server, one nine two one six eight dot zero dot two two two. I get the same results.
Server, now, let's look at the switch, because we haven't really done much with the switch, so in this example, I've got a physical switch, but in Packet Tracer, we've got a switch here. So if I click on the switch and go to CLI, the switch will boot up and then display something. So actually, let's do that whole process together, so what I'm going to do is close Packet Tracer and save the file, I've saved that to my desktop. I'll double click on the Packet Tracer file to open it up in Packet Tracer, and there you go, I'll zoom in a bit. These links show orange, because the switch is running a protocol called Spanning Tree Protocol that blocks loops, we'll cover that in a lot more detail later. For now, notice if I click on the switch, go to CLI, the switch boots up very, very quick here, but if I scroll up, you can see it says booting.
Now, that's a big difference between virtualizing them, takes, you know, it could take a minute, and, uh, rail switches, sometimes it'll take even a longer minute.
Ping, and it boots.
That's why I'm rather using Cisco Packet Tracer, I don't have to deal with the frigging, you know, bogging down my computer by, you know, gobbling up CPU and RAM. You know, trying to stream and everything else from it, you know, it's different if I had, you know, had a dedicated, I did have a dedicated server at one point, and that's. What I was doing with those servers was I was running, you know, bigger, you know, GNC, you know, GNS three labs and stuff like that, and, uh. I went out to virtualize it all on my. My main computer.
It's right up, and then shows some Cisco information, you can see Cisco Systems Incorporated shows that it's.
Okay, guys, if you guys could do me a favor, like, share and subscribe, and if you guys feel up to it, um, please support me, uh, you know, buy me, buy me coffee. And, uh, I would really appreciate it, guys, I really would, so.
Running what's called Cisco iOS, iOS is essentially the operating system of, uh, the switch. Over here, I've got a Windows computer, so as an example, I could say Winver to see Windows information, you can see it's running Windows eleven, version twenty three H two at the time of this recording. That is an operating system, on this phone, it's an Android phone, so it's running a specific version of Android, or here's an iPhone running iOS. Cisco devices run their own operating system, so.
And that, that's the cool thing about CML, they finally have a, um, a free tier now to CML, Cisco Model Labs. Um, I believe you're allowed up to like five, five nodes running in one lab at a time, so you got multiple, I think you have as many labs as you want. But you're allowed five, um, nodes to be running in that lab at any one time. And, um, I mean, it's, you could still pretty much lab, pretty much most things like that, you know. And, uh, still makes sense, still worth it, you know, still way worth it, um, obviously with GNS three, you can. Do, you know, you don't have limitations like that, because it's open source and stuff like that, um, Cisco Model Labs is a lot more polished. I give them a lot of credit, those boys have put in some serious work into that thing, it's beautiful, uh, it's only getting better and better as it continues on, and I hope it does continue on. And hope someday I'm able to support it again, like I was at one point, I was supporting the project, and, uh, hope to support it again. You know, it's a super fun, it's a real nice product, super, super, I mean, you could do, I mean, I, I, I don't know if you have, anybody out there familiar with GNS three, but you could do, you know, it's everything, it's just emulate, you can emulate anything, you know, for the most part.
But this is Cisco iOS, it's not iOS on a phone, but it's the same idea, it's an operating system that's used to manage the switch. It boots up, a bunch of information is shown, if I press Enter, we told here, press Return to get started. Now, if it's a brand new switch, it'll actually say, do you want to enter the initial configuration dialogue, and it didn't do that, yeah? So if it does ask you that, just say no, you don't want to enter the initial configuration dialogue, and then you'll see this prompt called Switch. So what I'll do is just force the switch to do that, so don't worry about what I'm doing here, I'm simply removing the config of the switch and I'm going to reload it. As you can see here, the switch is now booting, this is the process of it booting up, and at the top here, we can see System, Configuration Dialogue, press Enter. And it asked me, would you like to enter the initial configuration dialogue of the switch, yes or no? So please don't worry too much about the commands that I typed, scrolling right up here, we can see that I typed erase startup config, that basically resets the switch to its factory defaults. And then I use the command reload, which is basically rebooting the switch, again, don't worry about that for right now, we're going to cover that kind of stuff in a lot of detail when we get further into the course. But I want you to see here, as it says in System Configuration Dialogue, and it asks us, do you want to enter this, yes or no, multiple times, here it does again, so if I press Enter, it keeps asking me that. I'm going to say no, and then it says, press Return to get started, and I'm going to press Enter. I am now connected to what's called the console of the switch, now, in the real world, you can't just press Enter on a switch and get access to it, you need to connect to it somehow. And the way we did that in the old days was using what was called a console cable like this, so we'd have a cable like this connected to the COM port of a PC. And then this interface, which is also RJ forty five, similar to Ethernet, but this is not an Ethernet cable, would be connected to the console of the switch on my old laptop.
Yeah, so I did, I did have a buddy who had access to, um, you know, number of, you know, Cisco hardware and stuff like that. And, uh, sucks that relationship kind of went a different way, because he was going to allow me to start, you know, creating lab, you know, lab and stuff with real equipment and stuff like that. Um, which I was extremely interested in, since obviously. All of, for the most part, my, um, understanding, knowledge and hands-on experiences become, you know, came from, you know, for, you know, emulators and simulators. Not so much.
Once again, I would take this connection and connect it to the COM port of the laptop, and then I would connect this to the console of the switch. These modern switches don't have that connector, but here's an example with a one thousand series Cisco switch, notice I can connect the cable over there. So again, I'm connecting from the COM port of the laptop to the console port of the switch. So when the switch boots up, I'd open up an application called Patty as an example on Windows, that would give me a console connection to the switch. Now, again, we don't typically have laptops today with COM ports, that's a little way of doing it, so what we typically use today is a COM to USB converter like this. And then I would be able to connect the console cable to a modern laptop. So as an example, I would connect it to the USB port on the laptop, and then I would be able to connect this part to the switch. But again, a modern switch like this doesn't have those ports, that really depends on the switch or the router, I'll show you this in more detail later. For now, I just wanted to show you that I can get to the console of the switch and then look at stuff on the switch. On a modern switch like this, that doesn't have a RJ forty five connector, you would have to use, for instance, a micro USB connector like this, which would connect to USB on the other side. So on my laptop as an example, I would have USB on the one side and micro USB on the other to connect me to the switch. This is not Ethernet, this is USB, and then what I can do is find an application called Patty. So in my browser, I'm going to go to Google and search for Patty, first hit is paddy.org, second hit is this org.uk website, that's the one I want, so I'm going to go to that link. I'm going to click, download it here. And notice you can download the MSI installer or what I'm going to do here is simply download paddy.exe. That's now downloaded, it's very small, one point six meg in size. So I'll double-click on that file. When it starts up and look like this, so here's Patty on the right, here's the, here's Packet Tracer on the left. So if I press enter, you can see we've got Packet Tracer on the left. But on the right, what we need to do is connect to what's called a COM port. So I'm going to right-click here and go to Device Manager and look at Ports, COM and LPT. And you can see he has COM eight. So what I'll do here is specify COM eight. I'm going to leave the speed etc. default. So I'm opening up a serial connection to the switch.
See, this is again why I've always wanted to use physical, at least get my hands on physical hardware. Um, just to get the experience of going into it, you know.
Remember in the old days, we were using a console cable like this? I'll show you those kind of options in more detail in a separate video. But for now, I'm going to click Open here and notice it says initializing hardware. And if I press enter, you can see I'm on the console of a ninety-two hundred CX switch. So here's a Packet Tracer switch and here is a real physical switch that I'm connected to. So in Packet Tracer, we can type commands just like you would type on a real Cisco switch. As an example, if I press question mark, I see various commands. On the physical switch, press question mark, I see even more commands. Now, when you see more, you can press enter to show one line of output at a time. So that's one line of output. If I press spacebar, that shows one page of output at a time. Packet Tracer doesn't have that many commands here, so I didn't have to do that. If I press question mark in Packet Tracer again, I only see a small number of commands. In the real switch, if I press question mark, I see a whole bunch of commands and I can press spacebar to see a whole page there. Now you're going to get really used to the Cisco CLI or command line interface. That's what this is. I'm going to talk about Cisco CLI and Cisco iOS. The iOS is the operating system. This is the way that we configure Cisco switches. In the beginning, it can be really daunting, really challenging, but you're going to get used to this as we go through the course. By the end of the course, you're going to be very familiar with this interface. First thing you need to take note of is this greater than sign means we're in user mode. There are a limited number of commands available in user mode. You can't configure the switch, you don't have a lot of privileges. You can basically do some show commands to see information about the switch. And then move to a more powerful mode or privileged mode. Same thing here, you can't do much with a switch. One of the commands you can use is show version, I'm just going to type it manually, show version and press enter. And that shows me the switch that I'm working on. So in Patty, I could make this a bit bigger and scroll up. There is the command that I typed, here's the output of the command. You can see this switch is using what's called Cisco iOS XE software. This once again is the operating system of the switch. In Packet Tracer, if I type show version, again, I can see information here. So if I scroll up, what you'll notice quite a bit of output here. There's the command that I typed, this switch is saying Cisco iOS software. And then here it's saying XE. Packet Tracer is great software, but it's not perfect. It's not going to show everything the way it should, hence me using physical devices to show you what it actually looks like. But it gives you a really.
If and when the labs need to, um, I'll just boot up GNS three. And, um, do small labs in it. And I can boot it up right now. Show you guys, but it really doesn't need to boot it up right now.
Really good idea. Scrolling down here, we can see the version of operating system that was used. It's booting off what's called flash. Think of flash as the hard drive, just like you have a flash hard drive in a computer. This is the hard drive of the switch. And that's where the operating system is stored. It's a bin file, a binary file. So when the switch boots up, that's the file it's booting to load the operating system, just like Windows will boot off the hard drive. Or the phone boots its operating system, same kind of idea. On this switch, if I press spacebar, whole page of output is displayed, spacebar again, whole page of output is displayed. So whenever you see more, you can press enter to see one line of output or spacebar to see a whole page of output. A lot of information here, you don't need to know all of this. Again, scrolling up, there's the command that I typed and we can see a whole bunch of information. Including as an example, how long the switch has been up for. So it's been up for three hours and thirty-nine minutes. On this switch, it says uptime is seven hours and thirty-three minutes, which is not correct. This is just fake information on the switch. I mean, I, I didn't call the switch test. So it's fake in Packet Tracer, but it gives you an idea of what's going on. Here we can see license information about the switch, we won't worry about that now, and a whole bunch of other output. All I want you to know for the moment is this is called user mode. I can type certain commands here, but I can't configure the switch. Question mark shows me the commands that I can use. So I use this command show to show information about the switch. That says show running system information. On a real Cisco switch, if I use question mark, press spacebar here, notice that is correct. Show running system information on the switch. We can do other commands here, like as an example ping. So we could ping from the switch, but this is very limited. From user mode, you want to use the command enable to go to privilege mode or enable mode. Now, please note, be lazy, learn to be lazy with your commands. I could type enable the full command or I could just type EN and press tab and that will complete the command. This is similar to Linux as an example where you have autocomplete of a command. So tab autocomplete's on the physical switch, type EN tab. Now what I can do on Packet Tracer as an example is press enter, notice the output has changed here. The mode has changed, we see a hash or pound sign if you prefer. On the physical Cisco switch, type enable. In this case, I have a password configured on the switch, so I'll put that in and press enter. Notice the mode has changed. New switch in Packet Tracer doesn't have a password configured. So I went straight from user mode to enable mode by using the command enable. I can go back by typing the command disable and notice I'm back in user mode. On this switch, I had a password configured, so I had to put that in first. But I could also type DISA tab now and the command is autocomplete it and that takes me back to user mode. You're going to struggle in the beginning with these modes. You're going to type commands and they don't work. So as an example, if I type the command conf T here, the switch doesn't accept that because I'm in the wrong mode. You have to be in the right mode. So if you have a problem where it says invalid input detected or something's wrong here, command doesn't work, check the mode that you're in. Same on Packet Tracer, if I type conf T, that doesn't work because I'm in the wrong mode. What I gotta do is type EN, I'm going to press tab, press enter. That takes me to privilege mode or enable mode. This gives me a lot more power. Question mark, notice I have more commands here. What do I need to use now to see one line of output at a time? The answer is enter. So enter shows one line of output at a time or spacebar shows a whole page of output at a time. Same here, if I type enable and notice here, I'm not going to press tab, I'm simply going to type enter and put in my password. I didn't have to complete the command for the command to be recognized. You can use abbreviated commands in Cisco Devices, Switches and Routers. Really important that you learn to be lazy, don't type the full command. But notice here, if I press question mark, I see a whole bunch of commands, many, many commands. This is a real switch, so it has many, many commands. A lot more in privilege or enable mode than user mode. So we've learnt about user mode, allows us to do some show commands, you can do some basic things. One of the most important things is to move to enable mode or privilege mode using the enable command. In this mode, you still can't configure the switch. So to do that, you're going to use the command conf, so I'm going to type conf tab, which is actually shorthand for configure. And if I use the option question mark here, notice it shows me other parts to this command. So the only option here is terminal, so I'll type T tab and press enter. Notice the prompt has changed. Now we're in global configuration mode. Here we were in enable mode, now we're in global config mode.
Enable mode, global configuration.
In the command configure terminal, we've now moved to global config. Here I'm in enable mode, type conf and I'm not going to tab, I'm just going to do the abbreviated command, conf T. Notice it works in this mode because I'm in enable mode and I've now been taken to global configuration mode. If I use the command end, that takes me back to enable mode. Under this Packet Tracer switch, type end takes me back to enable mode. If you get output like this, you can just press enter to re-display the prompt. Let's exit out of the switch, so I'm going to type exit now to take me out of the switch. So I've exited out of the switch, I'll do the same here. Notice it tells us that the console is now available, press return to get started. So I'll press enter, I'm in user mode, type enable or EN for short, that takes me to privilege mode. Type conf T or configure terminal, that takes me to global configuration mode on the switch. On the physical Cisco switch, press enter, I'm in user mode. Type EN and I'll press tab here, that auto completes the command, press enter. In this case, I've got to put a password in and I'm in enable mode. Type conf, press tab, T tab, that takes me to global configuration mode. I'll type exit to go back to enable mode and I'll do the same on Packet Tracer and press enter here. Now you've got to type enough information to make the command valid. What I mean by that is if I type C and tab, the switch is complaining now because it says, what do you mean by C? If I press question mark at this point, notice various commands start with C. So it doesn't have enough information to autocomplete the command. So if I type CO question mark, there's still three commands that start with three O. So if I press tab now, it's not going to work. CON question mark, still two commands, if I press tab, it can't autocomplete. Hence me typing conf because if I press question mark now, the only command that's valid is configure. Press tab, notice it now auto completes. If I don't put in T and press enter now, it asks me, how are you going to configure the switch? Default is terminal, so I can press enter and notice I'm taken. Usually configured the switch is C ninety-two hundred CX. I could go conf T and type hostname, type the full command out. Question mark tells me that this is the name of the switch and I could just say test. Notice this means the command is ready to be used. So I'm going to press enter or carriage return and notice it tells us there are no MAC addresses at the moment.
Shut MAC addresses. Switch. Uh, show MAC.
Um, no MAC addresses have been learnt in this network. This is Packet Tracer, so these switches don't by default send traffic. In the real world, devices send traffic straight away, like Windows devices are very chatty, so they'll send traffic straight away. If I type end here and type disable once again, so DIS. And notice it doesn't work because there is matching commands. So if I press question mark, I've got disconnect or disable, so I have to type DISA. Press tab, enter now, I'm in user mode and I can type show MAC question mark, address table question mark. Whole bunch of options on a real switch, but the one I'm looking for is carriage return. So I'm just going to say enter now and notice a whole bunch of MAC addresses are shown in the MAC address table of the switch, including. Doing what are called dynamic MAC addresses. And I can see that these MAC addresses will learn dynamically. In other words, the switch learns that when traffic is sent in the network on specific interfaces. So this MAC address exists under this interface of the switch, gigabit one slash one. That's this white cable here and that's connected to this laptop. Hopefully you can see this is white or grayish cable. That means that the Windows computer that I'm working on is connected to gigabit one slash one on this physical switch. So if I open up a command prompt on the PC now and type ipconfig slash all, we'll be able to see the MAC address of the switch. There is the IP address of the switch and there is the MAC address. So if I look at the MAC address in Packet Tracer, that MAC address matches this MAC address. Notice the numbers are the same, but this switch has learnt that this PC is connected to this port on the switch. In other words, port gigabit one zero one. Now that may be a bit confusing with all the different Windows and stuff, so let's simplify it by looking at Packet Tracer. This is where Packet Tracer is great, keeps it simple. So on the switch, if I type show MAC address table at the moment, no MAC addresses have been learnt. When the switch boots up, it doesn't know where anyone is, it's waiting for the devices to send traffic into the network. So as an example, on laptop one, I'll open up a web browser to our server. So if I connect to the IP address of the server, one nine two one six eight one dot three and click go. Hopefully the switch will learn where the MAC addresses are. And notice there, we've been able to connect to the web server going back to our switch. Remember before, no MAC addresses were displayed, but typing the command again. I just used up key there, notice we can see the MAC addresses of the devices. The switch has learnt that PC with MAC address zero zero one, bunch of ones, is connected to gigabit one zero one. In other words, this PC is connected to this port. And if we look at the PC again, let's close the web browser, go to command prompt and type ipconfig slash all. Notice that's the MAC address of the PC, physical MAC address. The switch has learnt that this PC is on this port. It's also learnt that the server is on port three. So let's just confirm that. I'll open up a command prompt and type ipconfig, should be ipconfig slash all. Here's the MAC address of the server. It's learnt that this MAC address is on gigabit one zero three. There's the MAC address in the MAC address table of the switch. There's the MAC address on the PC. And here's the interface number one zero three, gigabit one zero three. What the switch hasn't learnt yet is the MAC address of laptop two, because laptop two hasn't sent any traffic. We've only got those two MAC addresses in the MAC address table. So let's go to the laptop, go to desk, enter to display the prompt again. So switch one, I'll press the up key again, press enter. It hasn't learnt where the device is yet, even though this is green. So again, press enter, nothing's displayed for that PC because needs to send traffic. And actually, what's happened for me is all the MAC addresses have been removed because they timeout after a period of time. So on this PC, let's close the command prompt down, open up a web browser. Question for you, why do we have MAC addresses and IP addresses? As an example, on this phone, I'm connected to a Wi-Fi network. I see a Wi-Fi address or MAC address as well as an IP address. Why do we have that on both Wi-Fi as well as Ethernet? And do all networks use MAC addresses? So the answer is firstly, no, not all networks use MAC addresses. In the old days, we had serial interfaces like this and serial cables like this. So we would connect the serial cable to this serial interface on the router. And this would be connected to another router as an example or to a WAN connection. So in the old days, we had serial interfaces like this, used for lease lines, point-to-point connections between, say, a site in London and a site in Manchester as an example, or as an example from New York to San Francisco, point-to-point link. They didn't use MAC addresses. Ethernet however, and Wi-Fi uses MAC addresses, that's the way that we identify devices on a network. On serial interfaces such as these, it was a point-to-point link. In other words, we were going from one device to another. We didn't have to have a MAC address.
That, you know, this goes along to spoofing devices, stuff like that, why MAC addressing is probably still a very important piece of the puzzle to, um, network, traffic, um, solutions. Um, gives us another layer to identifying, positively identifying the target, um, that we want to send information to. Um, obviously, MAC addresses can still be spoofed. Um, but there are some, uh, guards as we get deeper into this. You okay?
To identify multiple devices on a single network because there were only two people communicating. In a point-to-point link, if I'm, for example, connected to this interface and you're connected to that interface, if I send traffic, you're going to get it. If you send traffic, I'm going to get it, there's no one else on the network. We don't need individual identifiers for each other because I know if I send the traffic to you, you're going to get it. And if you send the traffic to me, I'm going to get it. But on Ethernet and Wi-Fi doesn't work like that because many devices can be connected to the same.
Right, and many devices can, you know, change their IP addresses, can spoof their IP address to be, you know, they can spoof it to be the frigging gateway, uh, gateway router and stuff like that to try to intercept all the, um, try to intercept all the packets before they're distributed out, before they're routed out and stuff. So MAC addressing still very important.
Network. In our example here, in Packet Tracer, I have three. In our example here, in packet tracer, I have three devices connected to the same switch. So we need an identifier of each device in ethernet on the network. You need to uniquely identify devices connected to the wifi network or to the ethernet network. So old routers, as an example, had serial interfaces like this, as well as ethernet interfaces. Modern routers tend to have ethernet only. Ethernet has become the de facto standard for most connections. So we have wifi or ethernet for the LAN or local area network, as well as for the WAN or wide area network. We typically use ethernet. As an example, here at home, I have fibre to my house, that is an ethernet connection. You may have a different type of technology like DSL or something else. But a lot of us are using ethernet to our homes with fibre connections. There may be differences, you could be using Starlink as an example, but ethernet has become the most popular connection method in the world today. So you'll come across ethernet everywhere. So in our little topology, this laptop has a MAC address of zero 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 one, followed by a bunch of ones. I can see that again by typing ipconfig slash all, there's the physical address or MAC address of the device. On this laptop, if I go to config as an example, fast ethernet zero, there's the MAC address of PC two. Same on the server, if I go to config, fast ethernet zero, there's the MAC address of the server. I showed you previously how to manually change the MAC addresses, so that's why they're simple to read. The switch learns where devices are in the topology when they send traffic and then it populates its MAC address table. But for now, I wanna show you something else. How do devices know the MAC addresses of other devices in the network? How do they discover MAC addresses? Switch learns the MAC addresses when traffic is sent through the network, but how does laptop one, as an example, know the MAC address of the server? Well, that's uses a protocol called OP. If I type op dash A, we can actually see a mapping between the IP address of the server and its MAC address, that was dynamically learnt. When a device sends traffic into the network and it doesn't know the MAC address of the other device, it says, who's got this MAC address? And basically discovers the MAC address of the other person. Let's make this real, so on that computer at the top there, I'll show you what this physically looks like in the real.
So what we've got for. Got our gateway, got the other PC and then the two servers. This which should actually have. How? It just got all of those messages. No makes sense. I mean, it could be because. It's just the way it is when it's simulated like this. Yeah, it's not.
The world. So on this computer, I'll open up PowerShell, you could use CMD if you prefer. Op dash A shows a whole bunch of MAC addresses in the op cache of the PC. If you did this on your own PC, you'd see something similar, you'd see a whole bunch of MAC addresses if you're connected to a network. This device has multiple interfaces, so don't let that confuse you, let's focus on this interface. This is the IP address used to connect to our little network here. It's learnt about these two MAC addresses dynamically. So as an example, it's learning that one nine two one six eight one dot three is using this MAC address. Now, I could clear the op cache by using the command op dash D. Notice we told that you need elevation to do this, in other words, you need to run this as an administrator. So what I'll do is run CMD here and right click and say run as administrator. So I'm gonna say yes to run that as admin. So op dash A again, shows me the various MAC addresses, including the MAC address for one nine two one six eight one dot three. If I type op dash D now and then op dash A again, notice that kind of information has disappeared. I see some other static MAC addresses here, but I don't see one nine two one six eight one dot three. Basically what happens is when I send traffic into the network, so as an example, I connect to the web server running on one nine two one six eight one dot three. A protocol called op or address resolution protocol is used to discover the MAC address of that device. So notice that now appears in the op cache of my PC. This PC has learnt the MAC address of this laptop by sending what's called a broadcast into the network saying, who's got this IP address? And then that PC replies back with its MAC address. Now packet tracer allows us to see this really nicely. What I'll do on this laptop is delete the op cache, so op dash D, op dash A. No op entries are found on this laptop. What I'm gonna do now is use simulation mode to show you what's happening in the network. Now please note, when you go to simulation mode, click show all none. You can see all of this is visible, but I'm gonna say none to make none of it visible. So notice show all none allows me to see everything or nothing. So I'm gonna set it to nothing and then I'm gonna edit the filters to only show me op.
So just what we do, we got our op table here, we're gonna go ahead and delete that. Not entries found, reviewed. Simulate, spell and then. And then this will show kinda like the traffic um, going through everything.
Under IP ver- version four and then under miscellaneous, make this bigger and I'm gonna look for HTTP and set that. So the only two.
Well, I'm gonna ping, I'm not gonna do all that, so we'll ping um. One nine two one six eight zero dot. They can see um, this missing. So we have our first op message here and uh, let this play. See how it hits the switch right here and we get. That same packet is now gone to the switch, okay? And as we can see, it broadcasted it out to everybody here. Server one replied back to the op message with, and it, and then we can see it, so. Uh, I paused it, so. Yes, so. Yeah, so this is the um, the server. Okay, so, I could source, so this is the, okay. So, okay, there we go, in layers. So at layer two, we have our ethernet header and it's coming from our PC, here's our PC MAC address right here. And our uh, uh, source IP address, which is the PT uh, PC uh, IP address, one nine two one six eight dot zero dot ten. Okay, now again, remember, we were looking for one nine two one six eight dot zero dot two two two. Which successfully, this is the outer um, the outer one. So server one has the address of one nine two one six eight dot two two two. So it successfully says, okay, that's, you know, that's me and it's sending it back to the destination IP address. Which again is the um, P uh, PC here, so the our uh, process replies the request. With the receiving port MAC address, the device encapsulates the PDU into an ethernet frame. And then this is the um, kind of just the breakdown of the inbound and the outbound. So again, source, um, target MAC, target IP, right here, the source MAC. Um, protocol type, op right there. Um, kinda the things is prevalent to you, really nothing else right now. Yeah. So that's how we can kinda see what's going on, this is the cool thing. And then we're now again, so now it's got its um. Yeah, it's finally reaching here, um, with everything, the frames destination MAC address matches the receive report. My um, MAC address, the broadcast address or multicast address, the device encapsulates the PDU from the ethernet frame. The frame in, is in our frame, the our frame processes it, the our frame um, is, is a reply. The app processes updates the art table with receiving information, the app process takes out and sends buffering packets. Waiting for this op reply. So we've sent the op request and we've got the op reply. Completing, completing the op cycle. Which is really cool.
Events that I'm looking for are op and HTTP, address resolution protocol and hypertext transport protocol. Back on this PC, op dash A shows us that there are no op entries in the op cache of the PC. What I'll do now is open up a web browser, just like I did on the physical computers and I'm gonna browse to one nine two one six eight one dot three. So before I press go, nothing's happening in the network, press go and suddenly we see a little packet being sent into the network. And if I hover my mouse over it, it tells me this is an op packet. So if I click on that, you can see a bunch of information here. I'm gonna talk about the TCP IP model and OSI model in a lot of detail in a separate video. For now, don't worry too much about all of these layers, we're gonna cover this in a lot more detail. All I want you to see is in the outbound PDU or protocol data unit, again, we'll cover that in a lot more detail later. You can see that the source MAC address is shown here. This PC is sending messages into the network saying, if we scroll down, it's saying, who has this IP address? Notice the target MAC address is a bunch of zeros. Source IP address is this, source MAC address is this, target IP address is this, target MAC address is a bunch of zeros. We're gonna cover this in a lot of detail, you need to learn about the TCP IP model and OSI model before we can talk about all these different layers. But I want you to see here, it says ethernet and then it says op. The PC is basically asking, who has got this MAC address? Now that goes into the network, so I'll press forward here, hits the switch. If I look at the inbound PDU, the destination MAC address is a bunch of Fs, that's a broadcast, which means it should be sent to everyone. The switch is gonna send this to everyone because the PC. T is asking who's got this and we don't know who's got this, so we wanna know from everyone on the network, who's got this MAC address. So now when I press forward or continue, notice the packet goes both to the server and this laptop. This laptop is gonna drop the packet, hence the cross there. Because if we click on inbound PDU or protocol data unit, the PC is asking for this IP address. That's not the IP address of this PC. This PC has this IP address, one nine two one six eight one dot two, or the laptop has that IP address. So this is gonna be dropped by the PC, but the server is not gonna drop it. Because the server has that IP address. The server's configured with this IP address, so it's gonna reply. So hence we've got an inbound, so that's the message from the switch to the server. The server destination MAC address is the PC. Base, when I go back to the laptop and look at its command prompt. We can see again, the MAC address has been learnt. So to summarize, and again, I'll cover this in more detail when I talk about the OSI model and the TCP IP model. What I want you to understand here is that certain technologies like ethernet and wifi use MAC addresses. Those are required for communication on the local network. So we need to have MAC addresses when we communicate in an ethernet network like this. Or on your wifi network, you will always see MAC address as well as IP address. IP addresses are typically used to connect to remote networks. MAC addresses are used to allow communication on the local network.
So that's a good way to look at it, IP addresses, you know. Pretty much public MAC, well. Yeah, local, not local, I guess.
So in your local subnet or your local network, and don't worry, there's some caveats here and some changes which we'll talk about later. The idea is locally on the switch, the devices communicate using their MAC addresses on ethernet. They also communicate using IP version four, you could use another protocol like IP version six. So in today's world, we typically see MAC addresses, because we're using ethernet or wifi and we see IP addresses. Either IP version four, IP version six, when hosts communicate with one another. We're gonna explain a lot of this in more detail later, but the idea is you will see MAC addresses and IP addresses. The devices learn the MAC addresses of other devices in the topology using a protocol called op or address resolution protocol. That is used in wifi as well as on physical ethernet. How many layers?
Let's see, got pretty far down, um. Alright, we're stopping, we're gonna stop at section four, for tonight. Um, there's about a hundred sections, so, little ways to go. Um, but well, this is, so the next section is just gonna be a one over the TCP, TCP IP model. Just into some history, into some depth, into. You know, terminology and stuff like that and some of the protocols that govern it and whatnot. Um, I think then after that, we're just taking a dive into binary and hexadecimal. And making it all make sense with IP addressing from there. So stay tuned tomorrow, um. I will try to, I need to really spend some serious time studying, blast this quickly. Just, I don't see the, the, this should be a problem for me to get through all this again quickly. Um, and then we'll move on. Like I said, the goal is to move on to Azure and some of the other cloud providers, AWS, Google. And uh, mainly Azure, mainly Azure, cuz that's where I wanna be using a lot of my potential skills and so. Alright guys, um, yeah, make sure you guys like, share and subscribe and uh, uh, if you guys do, we appreciate it. Um, make sure you guys, you know, help your, help a brother out. Um, you know, the support link to buy me a coffee um, is in the description. Or um, if you're on Twitch, you can scan the QR code or just go to the um, the. Um, address that's on the little support meeting with the coffee, the little coffee thing right there. I would greatly appreciate it guys, um, like I said, I should be back on tomorrow and uh, pretty early. I know nothing's regular about me, it's just who I am. And uh, yeah, if you guys have any uh, questions, comments and scrums, just hit me up. Guys know where to find me and uh, well, we, we will recon bein tomorrow. Alright guys, good night everybody. Peace! Take it easy! Let me turn up the music a little bit for you guys as we outro here. Boom, right there for y'all. Alright, good night.